Quiet.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. We are starting about a half an hour later today as we had our annual meeting of the Solid Waste Management Authority and wanted to provide adequate time for their presentations, which also included a hauler's update. And I'm pleased that our haulers have come together to join, to create the Cobb County Haulers Association to be able to better respond to concerns or interest of our citizens. And so we had a very robust and productive conversation this morning. With that, we're going to dive into today's meeting. As is typical, we have an invocation followed by the pledge. I understand that in lieu of an invocation this morning, we will have a moment of silence. So I will ask all of you who are willing and able to please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for our pledge, which will be brought by Officer Daniel George.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer. And I've read the date so many times today, I should know that all of us in the tech world and engineers, it is Pi Day. It is 3.14 Day. I see some cheers in the audience. Okay, with that, we have our first and only presentation, which will be brought by Cobb County's Communications Director.
Conveniently located. Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. First, to point a privilege, Chairwoman, I wanted to kind of echo what you said last week about the work in this room. I want to personally give a shout out and thanks to our property management folks. It's been great working with Travis and Rolando and the group to modernize this room. There's only so much you can do with what used to be a bank lobby, but I think they've done a tremendous job. We wanted to keep it in-house, kind of keep the costs down. That's why it seemed like it was a slow motion process. But we managed to do it with their schedule and the meeting schedule, so nobody had to be kicked out of this room. So appreciate all their hard work in getting this together. But I am up here this morning for the annual award for the Silver Eagle that for nearly 30 years, members of the Cobb County Management Team have nominated one of their own to get this prestigious award. The award recognizes a member of the department manager team for his or her outstanding leadership and demonstration of teamwork during the calendar year. The list of prior winners is made up of leaders of nearly every department in the county. I'd like to thank Cassie Maslum and Stephen White, part of the committee, to help make today's award possible. And I'll be honest with you, as the incumbent for this award, I was prepared to come before you today and spin tales of voting irregularities and a stolen election. But as I was recently reminded, I was not technically on the ballot this year, and I did, in fact, count the votes. So, that being said, moving on, I am extremely pleased to give this award to somebody I think is the epitome of what this award describes and absolutely deserves it. In fact, here are some of the comments made by some of the many department heads who nominated this year's winner. "With all the major projects, Cityhood, ARPA, capital expenditures, she played a vital role in every one of them and has worked with virtually every department in elected office to assist them with their projects." Another comment, "No one has been more cooperative and collaborative in the county." Another comment, "She takes on projects that benefits every department without hesitation, no matter how heavy her workload is." That is certainly true. "She's a visionary, forward-thinking professional who strives every day to be the best leader she can be, both for her team members and the community she serves." And finally, one nominator said, "We have to be nice to her. She knows my internet search history." So it is with great pleasure that I announce this year's recipient of the 2022 Silver Eagle Award, our Chief Information Officer, Kimberly Lemley.
Thank you very much. He's been working all night, so for him to get up in the morning and come here when he got home about 2:00 in the morning is really a big deal. But it's my husband, Chris. Thank you so much for, to my coworkers for nominating me for this. I definitely did not expect to get selected, so thank you so much. Thank you to my agency director, Sharon Stanley, and Dr. McMorris, Jimmy, and this board for your support of me and my department since I've been the director for a couple of years. And then especially thank you to my department for all of your hard work, your continuous hard work, and everything that you do to make our team successful and our department successful. Thank you so much for being here. Your dedication, commitment to this county and to the citizens that we serve is just amazing, and I'm so grateful to be on this journey with you. Y'all are really a great, great team, and thank you for making us look so good and for all the hard work that you do. Thank you.
IS team, please to the front for a picture. IS team, to the front.
We'll just stand up here because there's so many men I ask.
Kimberly.
Kimberly.
You should have brought the rest of the families.
I didn't know them.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, please.
Oh, my. We're the same height.
Three, two, and hang on.
All right, another angle. All right, congratulations, Kimberly.
All right, next on our agenda is to conduct two public hearings. The first one is with respect to consulting services for Cobb County. I'll turn things over to you, Jimmy.
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We're here to ask the Board to conduct a public hearing to establish a contract with a consulting firm to provide consolidated state and federal lobbying services. We currently have contract agreements with two different firms, one at the federal level that assists the county with identifying possible federal funding as well as legislative issues. And we also have a contract with a separate company that does the same at the state level. In our effort to consolidate these into one contract, we have, we're asking to consolidate those efforts. Our contract with our federal lobbying firm ends in April, and our contract with our state lobbying firm ends in, after this session. So the timing is perfect for us to be able to consolidate that into one. This is not a new service. This is a service that we're currently being provided to us, and it is also budgeted in our operating budget. So at this time, we ask the Board to open the public hearing.
Thank you. For our public hearings, an unlimited number of speakers can address this topic and this topic only of consolidating our lobbying services. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to address the Board. With that, our public hearing is open.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. Again, you didn't tell us much about what the consulting's for. And in the last meeting, there were like three consultants. And we don't find out too much later. And it goes to transparency, optics, all that stuff. Optics was mentioned yesterday in the, the, whatever. The, the thing is, when we have SPOSS, and because I don't know if this is about a SPOSS, but I've read this river thing that's coming up, and you know, all these studies that you use to sell a SPOSS to the citizens, they basically, it's like why you got Accenture, why you hire all these people for the new, new world we're entering really fast, is that our state law said that government cannot use taxpayer money to campaign for a tax. And it's all been circumvented. And I mean, when Cobb ran for redevelopment powers law with the Cobb Chamber of Commerce and put it in our water bills, and I took it to state ethics, and they said...
Excuse me, Mr. Harfoot, I would ask that your comments address this consolidation of the state.
Yeah, well, I don't know if this is that or not, because you didn't tell us what it's for. You didn't say what they're going to study and lobby for. That is the big issue. And it goes to transparency. It's like the Braves stadium. And, you know, anyhow, I don't know why we can't have transparency and actually say what they're going to be hired to do, because I feel like it usually is obscured, because you're circumventing the law that you can't use taxpayer money to campaign for a tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Christine Rosman. I think that we have gotten so used to, we're like the Cook Frogs, and Cobb County is spending, what, tens of millions of dollars every year on consultants? I think that's it. And you would think that that kind of money, you'd actually hire some people that are competent in certain areas. And I think that you actually have hired really competent staff. Yet, they get thwarted by, we're always deferring to some other consulting company. And then the pattern that we're seeing is that those consulting companies are all about DEI and whatever it is that you're trying to kind of push on us. And we're really tiring of getting pushed on, especially with our tax dollars. There are consulting companies like Chrysalis Lab, I mean, we don't even know what we're saying yes to. It's like, honey, I bought a house. Great, where is it? What kind of house is it? You know, it's, we're not getting any details. We're just kind of blankly saying, sure, these consulting companies have been doing such a bang-up job of trying to get us to look exactly like what the ARC wants us to look like, which is all of metro Atlanta. So we're really tiring of what the consulting companies are saying, consulting companies like Chrysalis Lab.
Let me be very clear. This agenda item is to address our state and federal legislative consulting services.
Okay.
Okay, so remarks during this public comment should pertain to that?
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Okay, well, I'll save my comments for later. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, again, specifically to the consolidation of state and legislative consulting services for Cobb County? Right, with that, our public hearing is closed. Jimmy, if you can approach, I just wanted to address some of the statements made during public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
During our public hearing, excuse me.
Both of these firms assist us when legislation is going through the legislative process at the state and federal level. They assist us with identifying those bills that are detrimental to Cobb County, that are positive for Cobb County. Many of our neighbors in large counties around the country has a huge staff that does this themselves. Some of our neighboring counties have a complete department that does this. We have one person, myself. There's no way that I can do my job as well as beat at the Capitol every day monitoring that legislation. So to say that we should not spend this money, we can either spend it on a consultant to help us, or we can hire up the staff to do it. I applaud the Board's efforts to bring in a consultant that has those built-in relationships with our state legislators, as well as at the Washington level, that has that relationship with our federal legislators. It's two different ways of doing business. Cobb County's chosen to go this route. It works. We get daily correspondence from our consultants that tell us, hey, you need to contact the Cobb delegation and help out with this legislation, or, hey, there's funds available in the library system for library expansion or construction. And they help us know what's going on inside the Capitol. So it is a, it's a very good system, and it's worked well so far.
Thank you. And the bulk of what they do is advise us with respect to legislation. But another thing they advise us of is of funding that may come from the state and federal level. And with the billions of dollars available at the federal level, we have opportunity to maximize the resources that we have to invest in projects and initiatives to serve our citizens. And so there is potential return manifold beyond the expense of paying for the lobbyists as well with their partnership with Cobb County.
Absolutely.
Yes. Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, thank you, Jimmy. I just want to say that this, these consulting fees have been in the budget since 2019. And what this public hearing is for is to consolidate to one firm that will represent us and has experience at both state and federal level with one, one firm.
Correct.
So we've been doing this, and they have been a good resource, but now we'll just be dealing with one firm. And I'm supportive of continuing this, but I want to make sure, well, this is going to go out to bid. This is just for you to go out to bid.
Correct.
The contract will come back to us to approve when it's all said and done. But I'm supportive of this as long as the fee remains capped at where it is.
Understood.
Jimmy, can you share with us how long Holland and Knight has been around, the federal lobbyist?
You tested me there. I...
Would you say at least five years, 10 years?
I would say around 20, over 20 years.
Yeah.
Over Sam Olens was chair.
Okay, so this has been around since Sam Olens has been here. So it's been at least a couple of decades.
Use of the lobbyist or Holland and Knight? Holland and Knight.
Holland and Knight.
As a federal lobbyist, it's been around for Tim Lee, Chairman Boyce, they, a federal lobbyist has been around for a long time.
But as far as a firm, as far as a firm, they've been around since the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as being a lobbyist for Cobb.
As far as having a federal lobbyist.
They were utilized in 2010, 2011, 2012, and then we took a break with the recession.
So at least a couple of decades. So this is not a new introduction to what we're attempting to do here. There was also a mention of SPOSS dollars, and, which has already been mentioned here, but one of the benefits, too, in, in having a lobbyist is that federal funds are brought to our attention, to which there are a lot of SPOSS projects that are eligible for federal matching funds.
Correct.
And part of the reason we're able to move our SPOSS projects forward as quickly as we can is because of the possibility of having those funds matched. And those funds are made, we are made aware of those funds through the relationship that we have with these lobbyists. I just wanted to...
Yes, ma'am. One of the, one of the major tasks that our federal lobbyist has is with the reimplementation of congressionally directed funding. They allow us to target projects that can partner with SPOSS to actually get those projects going faster and on time.
Without, somewhat without additional cost to the Cobb County taxpayer.
Correct.
Thank you. Other Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? All right. So that concludes our public hearing. Thank you, Jimmy, for your presentation. Our next public hearing will be brought by our Department of Transportation with respect to Chattahoochee River Trail improvements.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. The department has one public hearing for your consideration this morning. The Georgia General Assembly established the Metropolitan River Protection Act, MIRPA, designating a corridor of land along the banks of the Chattahoochee River as an area requiring special protection. In December of 2022, the county submitted a MIRPA certification application for review of the Chattahoochee River Trail Pedestrian Improvements Phase One project to the ARC prior to beginning construction of the project as mandated. ARC has completed the review and found a project, the project plans to be consistent with the guidelines of the Chattahoochee corridor plan. As a final step, a board acknowledgement of the ARC regional review finding is required in order to be able to proceed with construction of the project. So with that, the department recommends opening a, and conducting a public hearing recognizing the Atlanta Regional Commission Regional Review Finding, which approves the Chattahoochee River Corridor Certification of Compliance for construction of Chattahoochee River Trail Pedestrian Improvements Phase One.
Thank you, Drew. Similar to the format of our last public hearing, we will take an unlimited number of speakers to address this topic and this topic only. And again, for clarification, this is with respect to Chattahoochee River Trail Pedestrian Improvements. With that, I'll go ahead and open up this public hearing for anyone who would like to address the Board.
Okay. I actually saw this on the internet last night.
Excuse me, if you can just state your name again.
My name's Craig Harfoot.
Thank you.
And resident East Cobb. And even though one of the comments was from the mayor of Atlanta saying, well, why can't we get anything going here connected to this, you know, and it goes to the marvels. But anyhow, this is one of the things where you are going for SPOSS money, because you do the study, then you pitch it to everybody, then you put it on the 30-year SPOSS, and this is circumventing the law where you can't use taxpayer money to campaign for a tax. And it's because you're using these consultants. And that's where the lawsuit needs to go. But I'm not Mr. Letitianist. I just want to talk to you all, because the world's getting bad. And you may not have money you think you have in the future when the bank closes. So anyhow, I will not use up a lot of time. I'm just going to say you should probably not vote for this, because it leads to the SPOSS. And you're not, I mean, state law, I mean, it's why I, I filed one ethics complaint in my life, and it was about redevelopment powers law. And they, they broke the law. But we never, you can't undo it, why don't you do it?
Mr. Harfoot, this public hearing is, excuse me, Mr. Harfoot, this, this...
Please vote no.
Mr. Harfoot, this public hearing is with respect to a 2016 SPOSS item, not with respect to the 30-year SPOSS.
Right.
It has already been budgeted and approved. This is asking for compliance with the certificate required by the Atlanta Regional Commission's Regional Review. I would ask that you limit your comments to that.
Okay, I'll do that. The ways things are shaking out at the Fed and China going to become hedge money, not US, you don't have the funds to do this in the future. It'd be wise to be really wary and not proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Again, this is with respect to pedestrian improvements associated with this specific pedestrian trail project along the Chattahoochee River. It is in District Four. Okay, seeing none, our public hearing is closed, Drew. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Drew with respect to this project? I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you, Drew, and your team for moving this forward. It is a 2016 SPOSS project. We're really excited about it. And with the recent closing of the property for the projected regional trailhead, this is going to be transformational for the area. So I appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely. It's a great project.
It is. It's a transformative project, just echoing the sentiments of Commissioner Sheffield. When I first moved to East Cobb 20-plus years ago, I used to always run along the Chattahoochee River that's accessed a little bit north, a little bit more north of the county. So to have the river open up in Mableton is a significant improvement and addition to those that live in the South Cobb community who will have the ability to enjoy that beautiful asset right in their backyard. So we're very excited about all of your efforts to move this along and the partnership of Senator Ossoff and other congressional leaders in augmenting the funding that we have for this project.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, the department does recommend the Board of Commissioners recognize the Atlanta Regional Commission Regional Review Finding, which approves the Chattahoochee River Corridor Certification of Compliance. which approves the Chattahoochee River Corridor Certification of Compliance for construction of Chattahoochee River Trail Pedestrian Improvements Phase One.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. If you could lead us in a motion to approve the certification of compliance?
I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee River Corridor Certification of Compliance for construction of the Chattahoochee River Trail Pedestrian Improvement Phase One.
Thank you, I'll second it. Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Burrell?
I would like to give the clerk a statement for each vote taken.
All right, are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
And again, I'd like to have the clerk record my statement as previously recorded and shown in our minutes of the agenda on page 160, I believe it was, or, yeah, 161. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are now at our first public comment. I'll turn things over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come forward to speak, please state your name. And if you are speaking on behalf of any organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. A public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just as a reminder to the speakers, there is a timer on the podium that keeps track of your time. With that being said, the first public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning again, Christine Rosman, City of Marietta. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and some friends. What I wanted to talk about is basically more of what I spoke about earlier of as we entrust ourselves, our county, to these consulting companies, we're assuming that they are representing all of Cobb County. And that, I don't know if that's true. I'm not quite sure how Cobb County paid for Chrysalis Lab and United Way to put on some of those workshops that they did. But the result of that workshop was talking about the stakeholders of the Board of Commissioners. And they only talked about three stakeholders, and those happened to be the Democrat stakeholders, which did not give a voice to the Republican stakeholders. They weren't even considered stakeholders. Basically, they weren't given a voice. Basically, that means that if they weren't given a voice, their constituents weren't given a voice. So if we are hiring consulting companies that are in lockstep with DEI and Marxism, then how can the rest of us have a voice? How can those of us who don't want diversity, equity, inclusion? Diversity, equity, inclusion sounds so wholesome, so kumbaya. But really, what's happening? Diversity is only diversity of what we look like, not diversity of thought. Right? We can't think any differently or else we're called a racist. Equity is, is like adult version of, like, everybody gets a trophy. It's leveling the playing field. Doesn't matter if you worked really hard for something, you're just as equal as that other football player, of that other swimmer, of that other athlete or student. And inclusion is more in, like, inciting. Inclusion included only if you think in lockstep with DEI. And that doesn't represent Cobb County. Because you have a lot of people that actually, like, and then we're vilified because we're saying, hey, this DEI stuff isn't what it's cracked up to be. So is it cracked up to be something when you have Stanford Law, which is like the second most prestigious law school? When their law students are like just ripping apart a judge that comes to speak to the class? Well, there's not much decorum there. There's not much respect there. And those of us that don't like DEI, we're saying, what is it that we do like? Hey, how about the Constitution? How about that? How about when the Constitution is more along the lines of, do you want to feed a person some fish today? Or do you want to show them, teach them how to fish so that they are able to take care of themselves? That they're not so reliant on the government? How about that? How about our constitutional rights? How about growing, growing a country on, on meritocracy? Is that how you say it? On merit? Instead of just being entitled to everything? Because when everybody wins the lottery, nobody really wins the lottery. We're at a really, 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 really critical time right now. I mean, unless you've been under a rock, you probably know that there are banks that are closing. You know that there are millions of people coming over our southern border that don't belong here. And if United States and Cobb County are such a horrible place to live, why is it that everybody wants to get here? Why is it that they want to abandon their own countries and come here? Because they're on their way and they're like military-age men. Let's watch it, let's watch what we do. Think of Cobb County, not of yourselves. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Hello, my name's Craig Harfoot. And in that thing about the legislature, I, I asked, and we're using Denton Law Firm, correct? You're not going to answer. Anyhow, Sam Olens was seen down at the Capitol. Well, I happen to know that Sam Olens works for Denton. And you guys didn't even disclose that. I mean, you all know that, but you don't disclose that. And right there is a problem, a big problem. He gets a pension from, God, but here, the state. And now you're feeding him more money through his law firm. Now, a little too much at the trough time for these guys. And that's a big problem. And then I want to tell you something about, I came to the Ethics Board just to see who was there and how it happened. Because when I ran, and Sam ran the first time, state ethics handled all this stuff. Apparently, that, that suit I filed against Cobb County and the Chamber of Commerce, where they were putting up signs campaigning for a tax, didn't identify themselves, didn't file disclosures, didn't do anything. And I took it to Teddy Lee, a Democrat. And because Purdue just won and they hadn't filled up the board. They didn't hear this thing for two years. AJC wouldn't cover it. Because on its face, it said, you can't use taxpayer money to campaign for a tax. Well, they found against them, but they did redevelopment powers law. And Winter Group ended up going bankrupt in 2008. But anyhow, the whole thing is, the one thing they dropped the ball on yesterday was the, the nonprofit set up by the commissioner to do home rule. Well, I told them after the thing was over that that thing, any politician that picks that one up, you can launder bribe money to the commissioners through that very thing, the way it's exactly set up. And it's, I'm not saying she did that, but they didn't even ask to see the financials on it. And, and they denied the thing because there were no financials. Nothing at the state, nothing at the Secretary of State or an income tax filed on it. So, very bad, down the rabbit hole with that one. But I'm not saying they're, you know, I told them, I didn't think they should slap her or anything. I just think they should have seen the financials. And, and that's why I guess after my complaint, yet we ended up with a county state ethics board. Because the same day, Vernon Jones is in there being, or something. Another county commissioner had sold his land in a rural county to the county. And basically, the state board was saying, hey, you can do that. Well, apparently, from what I heard, our board wouldn't let you do that. But it was weird because right before 2008, when Lindsey Tippett, he's running for Senate. And I'm, I'm going through all the foreclosures in Cobb County to see why one guy need money to run the schools. And the banks had left them in all the people's names. And up pops his name, like he didn't pay his taxes on a piece of property. And, and he calls me before I get out of the, you know, I'm driving home. And he's, he's like, I don't own that property anymore. I sold it to the county. And I'm like, holy cow. I said, and I said, well, you won't get in trouble. Rumbie's putting your vote for Lindsey things on the front page of his paper. And I said, I wouldn't say nothing because guess what? No one's going to fault you for, you know, nobody's going to, but you know, this is why I, I think we need to address these things. I told the board they needed to fix this thing about doing a nonprofit for, as a sitting commissioner. Because really, it just opens the door to, you don't even have to file campaign disclosures. You know what I mean? It's like, hey, this is some other thing. And then the attorney told me, it's like, united we stand. And it's like, well, they did it. Well, that's why
Mr. Harfoot, sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
The next public speaker.
Excuse me, Bill, for one moment.
I'm sorry.
Yes, after each speaker, the chair may provide response or delegate response to another commissioner. The prior speaker made comments with respect to yesterday's hearing. Commissioner Richardson, did you desire to respond?
No, no, the, the hearing was done properly and questions are asked. And there are certainly pathways for recourse if there are concerns. And certainly, members of my community know how to contact me and talk to me about any issue.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll take the next speaker.
The next public speaker is Mindy Seager.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners. Happy Pi Day, happy Women's History Month. I'm here to talk this morning about the Be Smart program. I recently attended a training held by Commissioner Richardson's Education Chair, Lord Judge, at the library on the Be Smart program. And this is a program that educates people on safe gun storage in ways that we can prevent gun violence through safe storage. And I wanted to talk to you all about that and maybe propose a few solutions or some things that we could work on towards that. So I first want to introduce the program. And again, I've just volunteered with the group that, that puts us on and attended a training, which was very well done. Happy to have that and would encourage the other commissioners to consider doing that in your districts as well. Be Smart, Stan, is kind of an acronym. The SMART acronym is Secure All Firearms in Homes and Vehicles. Model Responsible Behavior Around Firearms. Ask About the Presence of Unsecured Firearms in Other Homes. Recognize the Role of Firearms in Suicide. And tell your peers about Be Smart. So I'm working on the T part today. Unfortunately, what we know is that firearms are the leading cause of death of American children. It has now surpassed cancer, motor vehicle deaths, other accidents. Per the Be Smart website, firearm deaths in American children range somewhere 2,571 children. Those people under the age of 18. That is more than motor vehicle deaths at 2,348. And I think anyone who has experienced the death of a child will, will attest to the fact that it is the most backward thing in the universe. So anything we can do to prevent, to prevent those deaths is something we should be working on. Every year, 350 children in America under 18 gain access to a firearm and unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else. What we know is that they're getting the guns in homes where they're unsecured. We have a gun in our home, we also have minor children, we have a biometric safe. It was an easy investment to make. It was a portion of what we paid for the firearm that we felt we needed for our home protection. I can access that weapon in less than a second. And I can tell you that I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, and I'm very proficient. But I am also responsible. So I would like to encourage the board and other commissioners to reach out to either Commissioner Richardson's Educational Liaison, Lord Judge, who has worked with this group to do Be Smart program trainings in your district. We did ours at the library, it worked very well. And our trainer did a wonderful job. She's someone who has worked for the GBI, so she had a lot of, a lot of knowledge on this. Partner with our law enforcement agencies and potentially with Safety Village. I know we have a partner with the local manufacturer Glock, and maybe this is something they would consider doing. And also to make you aware, since we were talking about legislative priorities, that HB 161, which is the Pediatric Health Safe Storage Act, did get a hearing post crossover day, and they will be hearing that bill in a House committee this Thursday. So I wanted to encourage you all for that. If you'd like more information, I'd be happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Stefano is the public speaker for the first portion.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. We will now move on to the consent portion of our meeting. Commissioner, we have a number of non-agenda items to add to the consent agenda. And I will read through each of them and ask for your support in adding them to the agenda, which will need four out of five of us to approve. The first one is to authorize the correction of a scrivener's error in the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing minutes for other business item 41. The second is to authorize the settlement of Trina Lomax versus Cobb County and Travis Dale-Herink, Civil Action File Number 22-1-03327. The third is to authorize settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Brenda Owenby. The fourth is to authorize settlement of worker's compensation claims on behalf of Mark E. Taylor. And the final item is to authorize settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Lester Maddox III. With that, again, I make a motion that we add those five items to the non-agenda items list for the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. For our audience, the consent agenda items we're scrolling on the screen prior to our meeting and will scroll on the screen after our meeting, consent agenda items are voted on in vain. And just to clarify for Commissioners, we did revise the donation from the North Georgia State Fair. We withdrew Agenda Item Number 21, which is to approve a resolution adopting a personnel fee schedule by the fire chief. We revised a MOU, or the item pertaining to an MOU between Cobb County and the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Acceptance of Equipment and equipment and supplies. And we also withdrew an agenda item pertaining to a resolution approving the issuance by the Development Authority of Revenue Bonds. Do Commissioners have any other items to note on our consent agenda? Let me see the orange sheet. Thank you. Yes, refer to that one. That's the ULC. That's the ARC item. I'm sorry. And use your mic. There's no need for...
That last item was agenda item number 23 with the Development Authority. I just wanted to...
Yes.
23, okay.
It's been renumbered because we've had revisions to the agenda, so our numbers are maybe a little off, but yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? All right. Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and authorized execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
All right. Are there any other comments or discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at our DOT regular tab.
Good morning again. The department has seven items under the regular tab for your consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Kimley Horner and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $426,164 for transit planning, engineering, and environmental services for Marietta Transfer Center site selection study. Project number E10C05 authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any comments or discussion? Call the question. The motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Kimley Horner and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $395,956 for transit planning, engineering, and environmental services for South Cobb Transfer Center site selection study. Project number X2417 authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. And I'd like to also add, this is a prime project in which we receive federal matching funds of $2 million towards this project. So, thanks for that.
That is correct. Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with the Accelerate Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $271,450 for Chestnut Lake Drive Sidewalk, project number X2730, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $162,371 for drainage system repairs on Brookside Court and Brookside Drive, project number B2257, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $21,566.84 for drainage system repairs on Wetworth Drive, project number D2841, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $27,263.49 for emergency drainage repairs on Twin Branches Circle, project number D2875, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Call the, excuse me, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is also from congressionally directed spending requests that did make it through appropriations. There are a number of projects on here. And the department recommends the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expanding $100,000 or more for engineering design services for South Cobb Drive SR280 traffic study improvements, project number B2435, Cobb Parkway SR3US41 at Blackacre Trail Third Army Road intersection realignment, project number B2436, Johnson Ferry Road at Shalford Road intersection improvements, project number B2437, Cobb Parkway pedestrian bridge, project number TR535, and Swift Cantrell Park traffic signal installation, project number TR536, and authorize issuance of requests for qualifications to secure the required services.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Our item this morning is for the Board to approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility ICAN in an amount not to exceed $865,687.42 to provide construction services for the Old Clarkdale Community Center under the 2016 Park Splot Program. The previous community center sadly burnt down several years ago. Previous splot work at Old Clarkdale Park included the completion of the surrounding park amenities in 2022. This work will add a community center back to Old Clarkdale Park and be a great asset to the community. We ask the Board of Commissioners approve the contract in an amount not to exceed $865,687.42, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just want to just say thank you. We just had the ribbon cutting last year, and we're already on track to rebuilding the community center. So, the community is really excited about that. I'm excited about that. And also, the savings of 13, over $13,000 we were able to negotiate. So, that's a bonus. So, thank you for all of your efforts in pushing this forward.
All right. Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0. Very grateful, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at Support Services.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this morning is a joint item between Information Services, the Sheriff's Office, and 911 Emergency Communications to request the Board of Commissioners approve a sole source contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., to upgrade and expand the distributed antenna system within the judicial complex facilities in an amount not to exceed $383,750, authorize a 10% contingency fund in the amount of $38,375, 2022 Splot Project B0010, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Property Management.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one in the amount of $9,147,500 to the contract with Mattson Cook to establish the guaranteed maximum price of $9,839,000, $9,839,550 for the rebuild of Gritters Library and the Northeast Community Center located at 880 Shaw Park Road, Marietta. 2016 Splot Program X0530 and 2022 Splot Program B0630, and authorize the fund balance appropriation in the amount of $112,976.2 and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, excuse me, and the further authorize the chairwoman to execute any necessary documents.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Gamble? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burrow. Travis, this has been a long time coming.
It has.
I know we pulled this previously. And I really appreciate you and the team finding savings in other areas with the libraries and parks and coming together to make this possible. So, with that, I make a motion to approve the Gritters Library, number 39, 36, sorry, agenda item 36.
This would not have happened without your fierce advocacy, Commissioner Burrow's steadfastness, and I know a number of citizens in District 3 are grateful for this action today.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments?
Just ditto on the well done. Super congratulations. It's exciting.
There's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Travis and your team, Team Cobb County, because a number of players in this room were involved in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was truly a team effort. Everybody kicked in. I'm proud of everybody. Just, I'm waiting for that.
All right.
And Jotun and Sharon and Helen and the whole team, everyone. And the Library Board of Trustees and Foundation, they were very persistent as well, coming to our meetings and advocating. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm still waiting on the green.
So, this is one of my 2016 project, splot projects that hopefully is coming to fruition now. I've already had a motion in a second.
Okay. You know, my driver instructor back at school said, think long, think wrong. We'll call the question. All right, passes 5-0. All righty. Yes, that was fun. With that, Commissioners, it's 10:30, and we are moving on to our second public comment.
The first public speaker is Monica Delancey.
Okay, I have a picture I want to show. I sent it to Mr. Ross. Good morning, Monica Delancey. Thank you for allowing us to speak and also to recognize that March is Women's History Month. So, I want to recognize that. And also, I wanted to first, I believe it's showing the picture, but I wanted to first thank Code Enforcement, Commissioner Sheffield, State Representative Cummings, the SCLC, for assisting with the issue that we had on one of our properties in the Riverside community. We had a couple of windows, balcony patio windows, that had been busted since, I want to say, before Christmas of 2022. And we put in a report about it. It was always, we're going to get to it. We're going to, we're going to order it. We're going to send out people. Everybody's on backlog, right? But then, when they send out notices about rent, there's a deadline for that, okay? And it's a deadline to get the rent. And then you have the court systems that uphold, uphold the deadlines. And then when we ask about these issues that's going on in these apartment complexes, well, as long as they made a request to get it done, there's no deadline, okay? And at the same time, our kids are going to the schools complaining about the places where they live, complaining about they have busted windows, complaining about their abandoned apartments, and people going in and out of these apartments, using it for just their, I guess, highways and what have you, right? And so, when you talk about our schools and how our kids are able to not be distracted, well, they can't get started with today's lessons if they have to think about their environment, right? So, if we want to make sure that our kids are thriving in schools, we must make sure that the environment where they come from are thriving as well. So, that's why it was of utmost importance that we had to have these windows repaired. Because as I attend public safety meetings, I attend meetings with Van Hooser, I attend meetings with the PDG unit, you talk about the broken window syndrome. Because when you see the windows are not being repaired, that means that crime can continue, nobody cares, that we could do whatever. So, on March 3, 2023, again, I want to thank Commissioner Sheffield. I want to thank State Representative Cummings. Those windows were repaired. As you can see, the busted window, you can see the repairment. So, I want to thank you for that. Moving on, we want to remind people, if anybody's listening as well, that, yes, the city of Maberton is having elections. This week is the last week of early voting. You have early voting sites at the Maple House, 5239 Florida Road, Maberton, Georgia, as well as the South Cobb Community Center, SIS20 Lions Club, Maberton, Georgia. And it's open today, up until Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Election Day, March 21, you only can vote at your designated precinct. And if you not, you do not know what your designated precinct, please contact Cobb Elections. I do want to recognize that this week also is School Board Appreciation Week. We want to thank all of our school board members, and especially the ones that cover the South Cobb area. I believe we have Michelle Davis, as well as Becky Saylor and Leroy Trey Hunchins. So, please, send out congratulations and appreciation notes to those school board representatives for Cobb County. The first week of March, we observed Read Across America. A number of us had to go and read, not only in the schools, but read through daycare centers and also at parks. I have a couple of people that told me they got together and read to the children in the parks who are not attending school. And also, I want to recognize that we, Dr. Riverside Rental Association, just hosted a, last month in February, resident leaders were able to host workshops in the communities as well as community cleanup. So, I wanted to recognize that as well. And again, thank you for allowing for me to speak, Monica Delancey.
Thank you.
That's the final public speaker.
All righty, thank you, Bill. We are now at our appointments tab, and the first one will be brought by Commissioner Burrow. No problem.
Yes, I would like, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve Smith Peck, reapportment of Smith Peck to the Development Authority of Cobb County.
All right, I'll second that. Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. And the next one is brought by Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce the reapportment of Allison Bickers to the Transit System Advisory Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. That does not need a vote. And that will take us now to the Commissioners' public address. We'll start with Commissioner Gamble, once her slides are pulled up.
Thank you. The arts is in bloom at Smith Gilbert Gardens. The team at Smith Gilbert Gardens and the City of Kennesaw are committed to preserving the arts legacy of Smith and Gilbert Gardens. Now in its third year, Arts Blooms takes place in the gardens from April 1st to May 31st, and allow the public opportunities to experience the arts through nature. The garden is located at 2382 Pine Mountain Road in Kennesaw. You can visit our Cobb Libraries to receive a free family pass for general admission for up to four guests at the Smith Gilbert Gardens. To learn more and reserve a pass, you can visit CobbCat.org/Adventures or scan the QR code provided. Cobb Libraries presents Blooming Flowers pop-up card for spring. Monthly Makers is a monthly crafting program for ages 14 and older. a monthly crafting program for ages fourteen and older. This month's craft will teach you how to assemble a beautiful blooming floral pop-up card and give it to someone special. All supplies, except the glue, will be provided. You can pick up your kit at the North Cobb Library at the Adult Circulation Desk between March fifteenth and April first. You can reserve a kit now at the QR code provided. And lastly, Flume is offering a special discount next week for Fix a Leak Week. Cobb County Water Systems is on a mission to help catch water leaks, big and small. While supplies last during March twentieth to thirty-first, customers can purchase a Flume for $149 plus tax and shipping. After a hundred dollar bill credit rebate, out-of-pocket cost is just $49. You can visit flumewater.com/cobbcounty next week for this offer, or scan the QR code. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Go on to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, and as you heard earlier, hello, everybody, it is Women's History Month, and certainly, just would like to reiterate, it's been a wonderful opportunity to just appreciate the opportunity to serve alongside a historic board and that nature for Cobb County. But this is a good time to just think about the history, not just within the country, but certainly around the world, of all of the ways in which women have contributed to your individual lives and our collective lives as well. And I just appreciate that. Thank you. From the office, tonight, we have the Little Brazil Community Meeting, something that's been really exciting for everybody, and just happy to see this come to fruition. So the meeting is tonight at 1296 Gresham Road. Doors open at six thirty, and the meeting starts at seven. You can come on out to discuss what you would like to see in your Brazilian community and create and help create a Brazilian cultural association. We'll also have DOT staff, a DOT staff member present to discuss how your local business can do work with the county. For anyone that's curious, yes, it is, there is an area, right, powers, right around Powers Ferry Delk Road, that is known as Little Brazil in Brazil. So we are going to just embrace that and understand what that means as a community together. Next, from the office, Rhine Park Girls Softball Opening Day. We had a fun time with the parade. As you can see, had the drum line there, the heavy hitters. Certainly have Parks, gave some kudos to Parks, because when we got there, or just earlier that day, the entire field was a pond. And by the time it was time to throw the first pitch, well, for the parade, it was all cleared up, and we were able to get out there and celebrate their opening day. So thank you. And community updates, Cobb Libraries' Spring Book Sale. The Cobb County Public Library Spring Book Sale will be held at Cobb Civic Center, April fourteenth through sixteenth. Materials for sale include books for all ages in both hardcover and paperback, magazines, DVDs, books on CD, and audio cassettes. Prices range from ten cents to four dollars. All profits from the sale go directly to buying more items for Cobb County Public Libraries' fifteen branches and Bookmobile. For more information, please visit CobbCounty.org/library. Support Cobb's Libraries. Thank you. concludes my comments.
Awesome sale. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Before my announcements, before I get started, I'd like to first say another congratulations to Kimberly Limley, well-deserved honor for the Silver Eagle Award, and we thank you for all you do for us. Okay, low-cost companionship at Cobb County Animal Shelter. March on over to Cobb County Animal Services Shelter to find the perfect match. Did you know that when you get your pet from a shelter, you save both an animal and a lot of money? The animals are fully vetted, they have all their shots, their spade are neutered, and they're microchipped. And in March, all pets are thirty dollars. Make an appointment to visit at CobbCounty.org/pets, and Animal Services is located at 1060 Al Bishop Drive. There are also two special parking lot events occurring on Monday, March twentieth, and Monday, March twenty-seventh, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. There'll be certain pets featured, and you don't need an appointment, and the pets in the trailer are free on those two days. Every day, we have free pet adoptions for our veterans, thanks to the generosity of Superior Plumbing and the Cobb County Animal Shelter partnership. To date, we have rehomed two hundred and thirty-four pets to veterans. There's a form online that you can fill out or get the form at the shelter when you go. And these are our last, our most recent two adoptions. On the left is a precious little lady which, who has been given a second chance by the Jenkins family. Mr. Jenkins served twenty years in the U.S. Army. We're grateful for his many years of service and for providing a safe and loving home. And on the right is a handsome mastiff that has found his new home with Mr. Shaw, who served eight years in the U.S. Army and Navy. We thank Mr. Shaw for his dedicated service and for giving this guy the love and care needed to make that smile even brighter. So this Thursday, at Piedmont Church, from six to eight, our Parks and Rec Department and I will be hosting a community meeting for input and discussion on the Shaw Park twenty-two, 2022 SPOS project, to get your input and ideas relating to renovating Shaw Park. For more information, you can email jordan wood@cobbcounty.org, or go to the website for Shaw Park SPOS. And on March twenty-fifth, our Public Safety Department will engage with residents at a forum from ten a.m. to three p.m. Saturday, March twenty-fifth, at the Cobb County Department of Public Safety Training Center, 2435 East West Connector in Austell. Topics include active shooter response, future technology in policing, gun safety, and more. Register to engage with our public safety personnel and the community at tinurl.com/forpcpndu6. A concert by Candlelight is coming in March at seven thirty on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, at The Art Place, 3330 Sandy Plains Road in Marietta. It will feature an intimate evening by music candlelight with the Flute Choir of Atlanta. Before the concert, stop by early for a mocktail hour from six fifteen to seven fifteen. And you can go online to purchase tickets at the website below. The Town Center CID Alliance is hosting their annual Noonday Shanty Five Ten K on March twenty-fifth, a lot going on on March twenty-fifth. The Noonday Shanty Five Ten K is a fun run coming back to Cobb this spring. Run along the Noonday Creek Trail while supporting future green space and trail projects in the Town Center area. The race is an official qualifying event for the Peachtree Road Race. You can register online at thetowncentercid.com/alliance/noonday-shanty. And there's a lot of excitement around Town Center and KSU. It's been a full week since Kennesaw State Men's Basketball defeated Liberty to win the ASUN Conference Tournament title, and that earned them a spot in this year's NCAA tournament. This is a first, and it's just so exciting that the Owls, now twenty-six and eight for the season, earn the number fourteen seed of the Midwest Region and will face third seeded Xavier on Friday in Greensboro, North Carolina. Tip-off is set for twelve forty p.m. on True TV. Congratulations, Owls, and good luck in the NCAA.
Thank you, Commissioner.
End on a good note.
Yes, amen. We'll take it. Very good note.
District Four news and updates. Please join me tonight for our Town Hall meeting to share District Four updates. There are a lot of great updates to share, including 2022 accomplishments, twenty-two SPOS projects, and more. Joining us to answer the City of Mableton questions will be our Tax Commissioner and staff from Economic Development, DOT, and our Chief Financial Officer. The meeting will take place from seven p.m. to nine p.m. at the Cobb County Public Safety Police Academy, located at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. There is still time to vote early for the City of Mableton's mayoral, and City Council races now until March seventeenth. Voting locations are at the Maple House Art Center, located at 5239 Floyd Road, and South Cobb Community Center, located at 620 Lions Club Drive. Both locations are in Mableton. Election Day is one week from today, so please get out and vote. To confirm your polling location, please visit mvp.sos.ga.gov. You should also have received a complimentary mailing from the Elections Office confirming your polling location. And for polling times, please visit CobbCounty.org. Renters, you may qualify to have your electric bill paid through a collaborative effort between Georgia Power and Georgia Department of Community Affairs. On Sunday, March nineteenth, Georgia Power will be at the City of Austell Threat Mill Complex from eleven a.m. to three p.m. to answer questions about the program and provide application support to those who need assistance. Additionally, a representative from the Tax Commissioner's Office will be present to share valuable information for homeowners interested in applying for tax benefits. The Threat Mill Complex is located at 5,000 Austell Powder Springs Road in Austell. Please join me in Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for our monthly In-the-Zone meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-second at seven p.m. We will discuss April zoning cases and recap March's VOC decision, zoning decisions. Our monthly In-the-Zone community meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in our community. Please visit didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. It is my hope that you will join us. The Georgia Food and Wine Festival, presented by Georgia Grown, is back again this year at Jim Miller Park on Thursday, March twenty-second through Sunday, March twenty-sixth. This event will celebrate the best of Georgia and the South. There will be food, live music, wine, and more. The Sunday Fun Day is a budget-friendly and family-friendly day with kids, with a Kids Zone and VIP Lounge Oyster Roast. Build-A-Bash is seeking vendors and sponsors for their second annual pre-Juneeenth Festival to be held eleven a.m. to six p.m. on Sunday, June eleventh, at Jim Miller Park. This event will be a family-friendly event, providing a Kids Zone, games, shopping, food, live music, and much more. For more information, please call 470-548-9089. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. All right, we can go to our next slide. Before I begin, I wanted to recognize we have a guest in our audience today. We have Jim Jaquish with the Atlanta Regional Commission. Thank you for being here. We heard from the outstanding Executive Director yesterday at the Cobb Chamber who provided an address of how we are becoming one great region, and I want to thank you by exemplifying that by showing up here for all of our counties and being here in Cobb today. I had the ability to attend the Gwinnett State of the County recently, and this also helps to exemplify the partnership that we have as elected leaders in the region. And Gwinnett shared a number of accomplishments, including the addition of three hundred and ninety affordable low-income units in their county, and their rebranding of their transit system, new policing initiatives, which include a gun crimes unit, and a Gwinnett Safe Communities Program, which will create a national database to make connections with other jurisdictions across the county. Finally, they have an exciting waterscape project that will bring together new water, sewage, and recreation infrastructure to Gwinnett County. And their pictured is the Gwinnett Chair and also the Henry County Chair. Move to the next slide. Also exemplifying our strong regionalism here in the metro Atlanta area. I went to Douglas County to see none other than our very own Stephen George recognized there for his advocacy in the arena of mental health. And a lot of us receive emails of programs and workshops that he helps to provide for stakeholders in our community. This particular event was hosted by the Nichols Center, and it was the Recovery Gala, and the emphasis was on opioid abuse and addiction, and a lot of the work that's being done to help support those who are overcoming addiction. Go to the next slide. I was honored and humbled to receive about a weekend ago the Zora Neale Hurston Award of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority here in the metro Atlanta region. For those of you who may not know about Zora Neale Hurston, she was an esteemed author, anthropologist, activist, storyteller, and literary innovator, and she's also a member of that sorority. And again, I was humbled to receive that award this year. Wanted to highlight some helpful improvements that's been made in the office. We've had some new faces walking around here in Cobb that have been helping to move the county forward. The first is Mr. Enrico Washington, who is an owner and developer in our region with the Blueprint Mastermind Organization, and he's serving as my liaison, and he's been attending a number of events on my behalf. He's been particularly helpful with our efforts to expand business opportunities with our DBE organizations, inclusive of minority businesses, women-owned businesses, and also our disabled veteran businesses. We also have Jennifer Susko, who will be helping in my office temporarily through the first week in June, and she has been assisting with community outreach. And finally, I'm very fortunate and just really amazed at the work that has been done already by Christopher Thompson, who's joined my office as a Communications Manager. He has his own PR firm and is actually a professor in communications at KSU, and wanted to give back to his county in his serving in the office and help put together today's slide presentation. We'll go to the next slide. Just a month ago, we announced a significant award of funds to different organizations in Cobb County as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And here, again, just want to reiterate that we have put forward twenty-four million dollars to help support community health and recover from the pandemic that we've recently experienced. Second, we have twenty-three million dollars going to support services to help in everything from rental assistance to housing. Economic development, we've been able to buoy that by twenty-two million dollars, helping nonprofits support small businesses here in Cobb County as they also recover from the impact that the pandemic has had on our economy. Public safety in Cobb County will be receiving ten million dollars, and most of that money is going to help with mental health initiatives and partnerships with public safety. And finally, we're going to see a boost of nineteen million dollars to county infrastructure to help move Cobb County forward. I'm looking forward to a time where we can honor some of the agencies who receive those funds publicly, and we can talk to you a little bit more specifically about some of those projects. But I believe with this infusion of funding to our county, that we are going to be well positioned to move forward, not just in response to the pandemic. positioned to move forward, not just in response to the pandemic, but move forward strategically in thinking about Cobb County's future. Wanted to recognize the efforts by Cobb County leaders to continue the Cobb 101 program. And this is an idea I had when I served as a commissioner, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the amount of ownership and stewardship that Cobb County managers have taken to provide this program. Cobb 101 is a program that's available to any one of you who are interested in learning more about Cobb County beyond coming to these meetings. This is a 10-week program where you get to sit with a few dozen of your peers and hear directly from department managers about how they help to run and manage Cobb County. And it's really helped to boost our relationship. It's helped to increase the level of, I think, education that we have of our citizens, as we have citizens that go out and can share this with their neighbors and let them know what services that we provide. And it's given us some opportunity for feedback and how we can be better as a county. We have an application period that opens up every, I believe, is it late summer? Yeah, late summer for this program. I encourage you to look out for our announcements. It will be in our newsletters when this program opens up again. We are in our fourth class, I believe, already, and they're going strong. And recently, they had a meeting with Cobb 101 graduates. Commissioner Richardson was there, where we, again, took feedback from our citizens that have participated in this program to learn how we can make this program better. All right. I did recognize at the top of this meeting that we are in celebration of a special day to those of us in the tech world. I know I have my peer here who's also a fellow Georgia Tech grad, so Pi Day means something very special to us. But we are also in the middle of Women's History Month, and I thought I'd share some facts around women's history to let you know how far we have come. So 10 facts to consider. In this past presidential election, 63% of the voters that participated were women. So women, we have a voice, and we are letting our voice be known at the polls by our participation in our national presidential elections. Second, since 1980, there have actually been a slight skew of more women in our United States population than men. And in fact, over the last 10 years, our female population grew about 6%. When it comes to women-owned businesses, we have a growing number of women who are opening up their own firms. And in fact, Georgia is one of the top 10 states of women-owned firms here in the United States. Hawaii is the leading state with about 25% of their businesses being women-owned businesses. When it comes to women-owned businesses in the arts and entertainment, that grew about 10 and 1/2% in between 2017 and 2018. And women in the tech sector and professional and scientific sector, it's about 15%. Women with STEM degrees, in celebration, again, of Pi Day, we've increased our numbers in this field by about 66% since 2008. And despite this increase, women still account for just about a third of all STEM degree recipients. Half of women ages 55 to 66, and this is a daunting fact and an area that we have opportunity to improve in, women ages 55 to 66 generally don't have personal retirement savings. With men, about half of men in that same age group do. So we have opportunity to become more financially literate and opportunity to make sure that we don't have more life at the end of our money. We want to make sure that we're able to support our increased lifespan, which is to about 80 years old. When it comes to women participating in politics, since 1916, every state but the state of Vermont has sent a woman to Congress. And 16 states have sent women only to the House of Representatives, and 37 states have sent women to both houses of Congress. Georgia, I believe, has not had a women senator yet, so I'm here to encourage some women who are out there if they want to set their, hey, even up here, if you want to set the bar that high. I don't hear any takers up here, so it's got to come out there. When it comes to the labor force, about 56% of women are in the labor force, but on average, women are making about $15,000 less than men in the labor force. Life expectancy, I shared, is about 80 years old for women, but it has gone down by one year since 2020. So we got to do what we can to improve our health. And I think a lot of this, as shared, has been due to the number of deaths due to COVID. And again, getting back to our political representation, a record number of women are serving in today's Congress. There are about 123 women serving as representatives and delegates in the House. And initially, there were 26 women in the Senate, and it said here that was when Kelly Loeffler won this seat here in Georgia. And today, Congress has more than doubled the number of women who served in the 106th Congress from 1999 to 2001. So just in the span of about 20 years, women, we've been doubling our participation at the congressional level. And as you can see by the women that are serving on this board, serving in elected office is not an impossible endeavor for those of you who have desire to lead your communities in political office. We encourage women to run. We encourage women to participate in our programs, and we encourage women to be present. Your presence here today means something, whether you're here in the audience or you come and speak. Everything that we do helps to make it easier for the women that are coming behind us. So with that, thank you for being here as a part of our Board of Commissioners meeting. These ladies hopefully won't go too far because our Board of Commissioners meeting has not ended. Even though we've officially adjourned the business portion of our meeting, we do have community development public hearings, which will follow today's meeting. We have two of them which have been scheduled, and I'm hoping that we have both of them present here today.
I believe so. We haven't polled to see, but I know there is at least one.
There is at least one. Okay. With that, Commissioner, I'd like for us to take, is 15 minutes okay, or would you like 20 minutes to adjourn before hearing? 15 minutes, we'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back for our community development hearings. Thank you, and take care.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this March fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Next on our agenda, we are going to hear from Community Development with respect to an appeal hearing for Brave Spirits LLC doing business also as Giant Wine and Spirits. And in fact, they're going to defer to legal on this matter. Before we have our attorney come up here, I'm going to defer to our county attorney, Bill Rowland, if you could help walk us through today's procedure.
Yes, of course, Chairwoman. If I may, with your indulgence, because you had asked about whether there are both applicants that are here or not, and during the break, we'd noticed that the person that we thought might be the applicant for number forty, we did not recognize them in the audience. And so if we could just have a sound, is there someone here related to L, a Totorin Corporation for El Barco? El Barco? Anyone here in opposition for that? Ms. Webb, I know they've been informed, the signs have been up, actually, you've actually taken pictures of the signs as part of the presentation, but there's no one here at all related to that? No one's contacted you?
No, I'm just gonna, I have to reach out to staff to see if they'll make contact and make sure they're not like out in the lobby or...
Somewhere else? Okay.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and hear the first, the first, and we'll see.
Sure. I just want to get that process started and so it's getting to the end, like, where are they? Okay.
Understood. Thank you.
The first one is for Brave Spirits LLC. And they're able, actually, to come up, they usually come up and sit right at the front row. Ms. Marchour? The rules that we practice on the alcohol license appeals is that the time of the appeal hearing is called, all witnesses will be present for testimony that will be able to be sworn in at that point in time. The License Review Board attorney in this instance is Mr. Wengler, who is appearing for Mr. Hensley today, will be able to make an opening statement, as well as the applicant will then have a turn to be able to make an opening statement as well. Typically, we have allowed thirty minutes for these presentations. This particular appeal is being brought not because there's any specific issue in the code that would allow this facility to move forward. The appeal is only here because of opposition that has been brought, has brought the actual appeal. It was approved at the initial forum, except for where opposition was, and then it was also approved the License Review Board. Typically, we handle these matters in a thirty-minute time limit that's split, when there's opposition, between ten minutes for each party. In this instance, there is public opposition as well as public proponents of the application. I would suggest to the board, and we can hear from counsel for the applicant and also for the county, but I would suggest from the board, in this instance, you may want to allow for a forty-minute presentation. That would be ten minutes from the county's perspective, ten minutes from the applicant, then allow ten minutes in opposition, and then you could also allow ten minutes for, there'd be, and proponents of the application as well. And in this instance, three, for the public to know, I would suggest that you would organize yourselves either as opponents or proponents in the group, and it'd be three minutes each for each speaker, and that would come after the end of the presentations for each side.
Bill, it's been requested that we get a count of those in support and those opposed to...
Sure. We could do something that we would normally do, like in a zoning situation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we did first, all of those that would be in favor of this application of Brave Spirits LLC, if you're in favor of it, if you would please stand. Alicia, can we have somebody, actually, do a count, remain standing, please.
All right, Brian's gonna count.
Ryan?
Go, Ryan.
Thank you.
Put him to work.
Sorry, how many? How many did you get, Ryan?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six? Okay.
Okay, and then also those who are in opposition to Brave Spirit LLC application.
Nineteen.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Not at this time.
No, sir, not at this time. No.
Bill, will we be turning things over to the attorney here?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I've covered all the rules. Are there any questions from the applicant or from Mr. Wengler? Okay. There not being, okay, you can go ahead and start. I'm keeping track of your time here on the timer. There's also a timer that's on at the podium. Whenever you are asking questions from the witness, that time is not counted against you as part of your presentation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Chair Commissioners, my name is Jamie Wengler. I'll be presenting on behalf of the county and the Business License Division today. We're here today regarding an application for an alcohol license for Brave Spirits LLC doing business as Giant Wine and Spirits. Vic Ramjet Bajwa licensee, the address is one-one-seven-two Milford Church Road. This application was received by the Business License Division on October nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two for beer, wine, and Sunday sales. There were no disqualifiers in the application under the Cobb Code, but there were timely written objections filed with the Business License Division regarding this application. Under Code Section six-dash-ninety, the written objections required a deferral of their decision to the License Review Board. Typically, the Business License Division could make that decision. However, when written objections are filed and they're timely, that decision gets deferred to License Review Board. The License Review Board heard the case on January fifth of two thousand twenty-three. The License Review Board approved the application four to one. Two objectors filed appeals to the Board of Commissioners, which brings us here today for de novo hearing on the application. Section six-dash-seventy authorizes the appeals, and six-dash-seventy-F states in part, "Other decisions of the License Review Board shall be final unless appealed to the Board of Commissioners within ten days of the date of decision by the License Review Board." Therefore, all decisions of the LRB not involving work permits may be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. It is the position of the county that persons who have filed timely written objections may appeal the decision of the LRB to the Board of Commissioners. In order to speak to the BOC, the objectors must have appeared at the LRB hearing and filed a timely appeal to the BOC. And as I said, there were two, there were two timely objections, or two timely appeals filed by objectors to the hearing today. Cobb Code Section six-dash-ninety-six provides that, under C-one, "In order for a written objection to be sufficient to authorize a hearing, it shall describe how and why the person violating the objection or the immediate surrounding neighborhood will be negatively impacted by the issuance of such license or permit, and shall be specifically state the reasons therefore." And under C-five, "On the proper filing of any written objections set forth in this section, the Business License Division manager shall defer such application without prejudice and then schedule the matter for hearing before the License Review Board." At the hearing today, the Board of Commissioners must rely on the standards set forth in the Cobb Alcohol Code. In the absence of automatic disqualifiers, which we do not have in this case, the BOC should refer to Section six-dash-one-oh-six. Six-dash-one-oh-six sets the additional standards for issuance of a license, and those include evidence that even though there's compliance with the minimum distances from schools and churches, the type and number of schools or number of churches in the vicinity causes underage persons to frequent the immediate area, evidence that the location is of the type of structure could create difficulty in police supervision, evidence that there's no licenses granted in the area or that the proposed area already has adequately supplied licenses, evidence that the license for the location would be detrimental to the property values, evidence that the license in that location would be detrimental to traffic, evidence that alcoholic beverages have been sold to an intoxicated person or an underage person, evidence that conducting the business creates a disturbance, congregation of intoxicated persons, congregation of underage persons, or consumption of alcoholic beverages on the premises, evidence that any agent or employee of any corporation in which any shareholder of the applicant had an interest violated any ordinance law statute regulating the business. The evidence referred to in six-dash-one-oh-six, which I just reviewed, can't be just a personal opinion that such conditions exist. Proof is required by evidence. Any objections or supporters who are in attendance today, as Mr. Rowland said, I believe, they will be given a three-minute opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just want to show you your opening.
Does somebody time cut into my...
Yes. Yeah. That's why I suggested it be just three minutes.
I just want to make sure I understand. I'm just doing the statement right now. I'm not presenting my case. Okay. Hi, I'm Lisa Moore Shower. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Berman Fink Van Horn. I am a Cobb County resident, and I represent Giant Wine and Spirits. And this application meets all the legal requirements. There is no ground to deny this application. It's a location that has been vacant for six months. It's a former CVS store that sits on the corner of Ostell Road, a very, very busy six-lane road with a median, and the connecting street is, or the side street is Milford Chase, which is also a busy street, and it zones CRC, which is commercial, I'm sorry, community retail commercial, which is a highly intense commercial use, and it sits on a shopping center property where there's a Walmart neighborhood store and a Subway, a nail shop, and several other, or a dozen different tenants. And it's very, it's a very commercialized property, and it has a lot of activity. As we speak right now, the store has fifty-eight parking spaces allotted just to this store, and it is a standalone store, and it is surrounded across the streets of Ostell and Milford Chase by general commercial properties. Those are not residential properties. So on either side, on the, across each street is general commercial. Then there are residential properties adjacent to the general commercial, but they're behind, they're buffered by the general commercial. So you've got the residential property that is completely buffered by general commercial, and then this specific property is community retail commercial, which allows for this use. And that is why the code is very specific about what kind of uses are allowed on this kind of zoning, in this kind of zoning district. The zoning code specifically sets out what uses are allowed, and the alcohol code specifies what criteria you have to meet to be issued an alcohol license. This application meets those requirements. And the fact that there is community opposition should not be the reason for a denial of this application. The community has to set forth certain pieces of evidence to establish that there is a ground to deny this license. I do not believe they're going to be able to do that. And even if, even if you were to deny this based on community opposition, the case law in Georgia is pretty clear that you cannot have just a mere denial based on not wanting a store in your neighborhood. That is not sufficient to withstand the constitutional muster in the Georgia, under the Georgia Constitution or the United States Constitution. I think I'm going to reserve, well, actually, let me state about the appeals process. We have a lot of constitutional objections to this appeal process itself, to the code sections. Section six-dash-ninety-six, specifically, six-ninety-six-dash-ninety-six and six-dash-one-oh-six contain ambiguous and vague, unclear provisions, and specifically, the section governing an appeal to the Board of Commissioners has no process in regard to this kind of appeal in it. It has a process about when there's a decision to waive a distance requirement, but there is no process in regard to an appeal of this nature where there's community opposition. The code is deplete of how you actually do the appeal and how the board hears the appeal. and how the board hears the appeal, and even the timeframe for having this appeal. So we have, I have a long list of objections, which I want to place into the record. And then the applicants themselves, I'm sorry, the appellants, the two appellants, we understand that one of them lives at 2817 Everwood, which is half a mile away from this location, and the other is at 1681 North Milton, Milford Creek Road. And that is 1.2 miles away from this location. I drove it myself. I went into both subdivisions. You cannot see, and we have pictures in our evidence you'll see when we go through the slide presentation, you cannot see the store from either of those subdivisions. It's way far away as far as visual. And the same is true of the church that's .82 miles down the road. And this location meets all the requirements. I'll reserve it for you to see our video and some pictures. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call Alicia Webb.
Afternoon.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give? And this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Alicia Webb, Cobb County Business License Division Manager.
And how long have you been employed as the Business License, in the Business License Division?
Seventeen years.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. And what are your duties?
I'm in the realm of alcohol. I am to review and consider for approval all alcohol license applications after reviewed by the Cobb County Police Department.
And are you familiar with the application for Giant Wine and Spirits? Is that issued here today?
Yes, sir.
And how are you familiar with that?
I reviewed this application, and it was deferred to the License Review Board.
And why was it deferred?
There was opposition from the community that was filed in a timely fashion.
And those are filed in writing?
Yes, sir.
And there were no disqualifiers? There were no code disqualifiers for this location?
No, the only grounds, there was no denial. There's not, it's not a denial at all. It's just a deferral. There are no, all the distance requirements were met, as well as the criminal history investigation was also met.
And when did the License Review Board hold a hearing on those objections?
The License Review Board deferral hearing was on January the 5th.
And how did the License Review Board vote on that application?
To approve the license.
And did anyone file an appeal of that decision?
Yes, two of the original opposing parties filed appeals to this board, yes, sir.
And there were two timely appeals filed?
Correct.
And could you tell the board how your office handles the posting of signs for both LRB hearings and BOC appeals?
Yes. So actually, it's from the initiation of the application all the way through this point. The initial application, sorry, signage are posted to notify the community that an alcohol establishment has in fact applied for a license at that specific location. Those signs are posted for two weeks, and there is an advertisement in the Marietta Daily Journal. Beyond that, once the deferral happens, we post signs again. Those run for a minimum of two weeks, or those are posted for a minimum of two weeks, giving the community notification that there has been a hearing scheduled based on the opposition. And then, once we get to this level, there are another set of signs posted for a minimum of two weeks notifying the community that a hearing, the community that this hearing has been scheduled. In addition to that, we do contact both the applicant as well as the opposing parties to notify them of this hearing.
Do you have anything else you'd like to tell the board?
No, sir.
The side for this witness.
Good morning, Ms. Webb.
Good morning.
Okay, I would like to ask you a few questions. In regard to this, the appeal before the License Review Board, did you send out a letter to the applicant that actually said that the license had been denied?
I did.
And was that done in error?
Yes.
Okay, and it should not have been a denial, it should have been a deferral?
It was a deferral, which was made in the record for the License Review Board hearing as well, yes.
And that denial letter is in the packet for the application today before the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
And is it stated a denial letter?
It's the original letter.
Okay, so the denial, so the word denial, or the words denial letter are actually not accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And I just, can you state for the record that the denial letter should be a deferral letter? Notice of deferral?
Yes, ma'am. As I stated earlier, this is a deferral. It is not a denial. There was an error in the original letter. Again, that was set for the record for the License Review Board as well. It is not a denial for distance. It is a waiver. I mean, it is a deferral based on the opposition.
In regard to the two appeals that have been filed, did both of those, or did both of those people timely file an appeal of the application by the deadline before the License Review Board hearing took place?
Both of the gentlemen who filed the appeal to this board did file timely opposition and were at the License Review Board hearing and spoke there.
They, so each of these applicants did?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. How do you notify, well, once you got those appeal letters, what did you do? What actions did you take when you received the two appeals from those two people?
Once we realized or determined which or when that was going to be scheduled before the Board of Commissioners, all parties were notified in writing.
Who are all parties?
Your client, as well as the opposing parties, were notified of this hearing.
So who are the, who, what opposing parties did you notify?
The opposing parties who filed timely written opposition before the License Review Board hearing.
So everybody who, everybody who filed an opposing letter prior to the License Review Board hearing, even though they did not appeal the License Review Board decision, got notice of this hearing today?
Yes, ma'am. It's also stated on the sign that's posted there for any opposing parties, should they be interested. But yes, they were all notified.
Where do you get authority to notify opposing parties that did not make the appeal to notify them of this hearing? What authority do you have to do that?
It's been our common practice and process and procedure to notify all parties involved.
Did you notify the supporters of the application?
I do not have the most recent supporters, and no, I did not.
So only the, only the parties who opposed prior to the License Review Board hearing were notified of this hearing today?
Correct. All of the support that has come forward from License Review Board forward, I don't have record of that.
They had stated their names and addresses, did they not, during the License Review Board hearing?
I don't, we had a sign-up sheet. I do not have all of their addresses, no.
So there's no, you can't think of any, there's no, there's no code provision in either the zoning code or the alcohol code for the Cobb County Code of Ordinances that gives you authority or directs you to send out written notification about this Board of Commissioners hearing?
No. There's nothing in the code that tells me specifically who to contact in these matters.
I think this has been asked and answered multiple times.
Okay. Now, as far as the letters themselves, the opposition letters, even the ones prior to the License Review Board, have you ever assisted somebody with language in regard to what should go into an opposition letter?
I have never assisted anyone in how to compose a letter. I have with any citizen or business owner. This has to be of substance. You cannot submit an opposition letter just because you don't want something there. So if that's what you're asking, yes.
Okay. I'm going to show you something and ask you what it is. Show you a document, and tell me what that is.
It states, "I cannot give you an example of an opposition letter, but you need to state specifically why you oppose to the license being issued, i.e. negative impact on property values, the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood, et cetera." And those verbiage comes from our code.
So what, so exactly what was this, that you said that in?
A response to an opposition that did not have any substance.
So you directed him as to what he could put into the opposition letter?
I told him-
Ma'am, again, this has been asked and answered multiple times. We understand the point that you're making, but it's-
Okay, I have to make it for the record, though, in case we need to appeal it. So I just want to make sure we get our evidence in.
It almost sounds like badgering when you have multiple questions being asked.
I think the first portion of it, of the questioning, as I understood it, was relating to who had the opposition. This is a second question regarding the specific information that she provided opposition, as I understand this question. It's a little bit different. It's a different category of opposition. But I do think she's answered the question at this point.
I'll close it. I just have to, I have to do that for the record. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
At this time, if the board has any questions to Ms. Webb?
Commissioner Damm.
Ms. Webb, I know from our zoning practice hearings, the only names that are recorded are those of speakers that come up and address the board. So is there a similar practice at the License Review Board meetings? Or how is that documented as far as who speaks in favor or against an application?
Yes, we do. It's because that's not really a provision as specific as in zoning. We do, yes. We collect names and contact information. And again, we don't always get the exact contact information we're asking for, but yes, we make an attempt for that.
And again, just to clarify, the information that is recording is only those that come forward to speak and address the board? Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Burrow?
And they're sworn in like in zoning, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You mentioned that the License Review Board recommended approval. Was that unanimous, or what was the count?
Do you believe it was a, I think it was a 5-0 vote. I'll have to go back and look at the minutes. I can go back and look at that. It's four-one. Okay. So it was a four-one vote, and I can look at the minutes to see who, if you, who was the opposing-
I was just curious, what the-
Four-one. And in this case, because there wasn't a distance issue, in most cases, they're asking for a distance waiver. Again, in this case, they were not. And so once that approval happened, if there not had been opposition, we would have issued the license.
Okay, so the deferral, I mean, the recommendation for approval, the hearing was based solely on the number of opposition that was received? And that's part of our code if it's over?
It can be one person. It doesn't have to be one, one opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wingle, do you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Ms. Murschauer. He could help you with the mic, too.
Interesting.
I have a small fan.
I have all these. At this time, you-
I have a small fan. Can I control it?
Since it's not in any powerful environment, I'm probably going to have to watch you.
Okay. I'll turn the screen just so I can see it, because I couldn't.
You'll be able to see it up there, too, if you want.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to start with a video presentation of what this store is going to look like. It's not exact, but it is going to be very similar to this. That's the area. That's the store as it looks right now. You can see a lot of parking around the, around the store. That's the side of it. That's the back. Okay, that's, yeah, that's the front, facing Ostell Road. What you're looking at right there faces Ostell. That's the interior. It's a high-end, very nicely designed store. It will not look like the stores that you might think it might look like. It's going to be very well-furbished. It's going to have a very wide selection of alcohol, including higher-end wines and distilled spirits. It's going to have a tasting room. It's going to have a humidor where people can buy cigars, but not, it's not a smoking room. You can see how very nicely it will be laid out. There will be very educated staff to help people make selections. It looks totally different than any store in this area. And the nearest store is 6,500 feet away from here, and it does not look like the store. This is a store that people would be proud to shop in. Number two is the map of, we have, we have counted that there are 760 people who sent in emails or signed a petition in support of the store. We mapped out where they all live. I'm sorry, it's sideways. I don't know if it can be turned, but that map shows at least 80% of the people live in District 4, and some of the people are here today to speak. But that map shows a very, very significant amount of people who want the store in their, in their district. Number three. That's the distance survey that's part of the application. It shows that they are very far away from each use that they're supposed to be far from. They meet all the distance requirements. The nearest store, the nearest package store, I believe, is 6,500 feet away. And the nearest residence is further away than is required by the code. Number four. That's an overall, that's an overall view showing the distance to one of the homes that one of the appellants lives in. I'm not sure exactly which one that is, but that blue line shows how you would have to drive from that person's home all the way out to Milford Church Road, and then up Milford Church Road to the store right there. So that's, I believe that's the one that's 1.2 miles away. Next slide, please. This is the distance showing to the 28, I think it's 2817 Everwood. That shows that they also live inside a subdivision. They have to come out of their subdivision and all the way up Milford Church Road, across Ostell Road, a very large street, to get to the store. It's, I think it's .5 miles from that house. Those are the two, the appeal applications that were saved. Next slide, please. That's an aerial view. If we zoomed in, we can see that it's very commercialized around there. It sits on a shopping center property, and that the homes are farther away and buffered by the general commercial zoning districts that I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. Another aerial view showing where this is. The red dot is the store. Right behind it is the other shopping center portion where the Walmart is, and all the other retail uses that are in that shopping center, some of which units are vacant right now and have been vacant for quite a while, which is not good for this community. And this, this store has sat vacant for six months, and the seller, and I have a letter in this packet, you can do the next slide, has indicated that he has had no other people to, who have offered to come in and either lease or, well, he's trying to sell it, but to lease or sell it. That's the store as it looks. You can see it sits on a corner of a very busy intersection. And it's kind of low. It sits kind of low down. There's a little metal- And it's kind of low. It's, it's kind of low down. There's a little metal fence in front of it, or not a fence, but a little bar, right there, you can see a little barrier. Okay, next slide, please. That's, that's just the front of what it would look like. The signage would not necessarily be that. It would have to be in line with Cobb County zoning sign regulations. Next slide, please. Same thing. Same thing. Next slide. Sorry, I'm trying to go fast. That's the side of it. And they have actually put a fence around, there's a now fence at the back of it to keep people from dumping, because people have been back there dumping since it's been vacant. Next slide. So having somebody in this building will keep that from happening. That will keep vagrants from being there, and it will keep dumping from happening.
Ms. Morechild, I hate to interrupt you. Your, your time has expired. I don't know if the board would want to give additional time or not, or how much more time you would need to finish your presentation.
I'd like to finish the slide, these slides, if possible.
How much longer would that be?
I don't know what number we're on. About maybe five more minutes.
Commissioners, if you're amenable, we can give that amount of time towards others who are here to speak towards this matter.
Before the decision.
How different, what, what's different on the slides versus what you've already shown?
I showed the store, I sure, I have some pictures that show what it looks like looking off from the store, standing at the store, looking out to Ostel Road and Milford Church Road. I've got a view from the church. I went down to the church and took a picture looking up the street.
Okay. I'm, pardon the interruption. That's fine. Well, I'm willing to grant five minutes if we can grant five to the other side.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Does that make another five for the opposition and supporters?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be. If it's, if it's just related to, I think the county is complete with their time. They have just 90 seconds left. It's all their time left, so you can just grant it just to the applicant. So.
So we're talking an additional, like, 15 minutes? I just want to.
No, just additional five minutes for her to complete her.
Right, but then we have to grant the other side.
Well, that would be up to the board, whether you want to or not, yes.
But what about support and opposition?
That would be up to the board if you want to do that or not.
So there's, this is the supportive statement, so that's what's reflected in this additional five minutes. Then it'd be others that are.
Right, but I, I just wanted clarification on whether or not it would be an additional five minutes for the people in the audience that's here to speak for or against. I'm willing to conclude at, at slide number 13. Yeah.
Just for perspective, because we've seen the aerials, so we, we kind of understand how it would be. But what if we just saw the slides from Milford Church Road and then the two subdivisions?
Okay, that'll be fine. So can you share that?
Do you want me to give numbers?
Can you share that in three minutes?
I, I can do it.
Okay.
If I were doing that, I'd be flipping it.
Is the board okay with, with the?
Technically, it's a question from the board, so it doesn't.
Yes, we're not, I'm just trying to be fair towards our presenter and also be fair to the number of people in opposition, and there are a number of them. So I'm sure the more time we give her, it gives the others more time as well. So.
But, but any, any time that the board asks does not count against that time. So if that was a question that Commissioner Dambrell had, it wouldn't count against your time.
The questions we're asking now, this is not counting against your time or any other questions that we do have.
Right.
But I have a question. It's so.
Give us, give us one more.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Burrell.
Okay. I thought I heard the county attorney say that the additional minutes for Ms. Morechild would only add to the county attorney's time, not the speakers in the audience as well, or do they?
That's our decision.
That's our decision.
The county attorney's position is that they're complete. They have 90 seconds left. She's asking for additional five minutes. That's all the board would decide now. I think the chairwoman has brought up, as far as equity, if she provided additional five minutes for the applicant, she felt like she also would have to do for those that may be speaking as proponents and also for opponents, but that would be up to the board.
Well, okay, but they, the audience has 10 minutes in support for speakers and 10 minutes in opposition.
Right, and granting five would be 15 each.
Right. But we don't have, we can leave them at 10, correct? Okay, that's all I'm.
We can, but if we're going to give her five minutes.
The five minutes in the.
Ma'am, if you can conclude within three minutes, we'll go ahead and continue with what we have proposed.
Okay.
Just trying to be diplomatic, but it's turning into something.
Yes, ma'am, we can give you three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So that's a picture looking out of the store onto Ostel Road, and that's the intersection. That's Milford Church Road. That's the stores that are behind the store, right behind it. That's looking down toward the church. The church is way down there. You cannot see it. That's the church looking up to Ostel Road, and you cannot even see Ostel Road. And there is a light up there. That's looking from the subdivisions from both entrances. One is on the right, one is on the left, and that you cannot see this, you can't even see Ostel Road from there. That's one of the subdivisions. It has a long windy road. That's the other one. It has a long windy road. I'm just showing how far away these homes are from the store. That, these are the interior of the store, which you saw in the video, so we can just flip through these real quick. Yeah, they're sideways. I'm sorry, they got loaded that way, but the store is going to be very nice. That's a, that's a letter from the seller that indicates that he has tried, he's been trying to sell the store for more than six months. He officially listed it six, it became vacant six months ago. He has had a very hard time in trying to sell it or lease it. So it, if it does not go, and my client's buying it. He's not leasing it. He is buying it. He's going to spend over $5 million buying it, which is money that Cobb County will generate from his sales revenues. But he is intending to be there for a long time. A purchase of $5 million is a significant investment into this community. So he is not just leasing it, and that's, that's a big fact of this case. So this might sit vacant if you do not allow him to, to get this license, because he's not going to go in if he doesn't get the license. And then the next, let's see, I just have, that's the code. I want to put the certified copy of the alcohol code in. You can go to the next one. These are sections specifically that I have issues in my objections with. Section 690, you don't even have to open all these. You can close it. The next three are six, let me just mention them. 696, 60106, and then the distance requirements are found in 1, 6124 and 125. They meet all those requirements. That's the application for the alcohol license. That is the, oh, my client sent out mailers before, before he even went to the license review board to surrounding community residents, asking for them to meet with him to talk about the store. And he gave them all these dates in January, and a lot of people did come to meet with him. And that's where he got a lot of the support. So, but some of the opposition came as well. So he wanted to talk to everybody about it. He wants to be a good resident and a good citizen. And he wants to know the community and who's going to shop at his store. He needs to know what his, who is going to make up his patronage. So I think that, is that the last one? That might be the last. Oh, and that's the agenda. So I want to make sure the agenda gets included. So I'd like, I'd like to submit all of these documents into the record. And I hit it.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving it to me. Okay, so I can, I'm concluding. I ask you to please grant this license for my client, who's sitting over there. And then, and then we'll have an opportunity for support.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, for closing.
Excuse me. And those that are opponents, you have, I assume from the board's direction, 13 minutes for, okay. And you have three minutes each for you to be able to speak. And my understanding was there were coordination regarding who those people would be, and ask you to come up front and you can make, make your presentations. And I remind you again, there's a timer on the podium for you to be able to keep track of your time. I'm sorry, Mr. Wengler, was there anything additional?
Yep. It's the county's position that only the two individuals that filed a timely appeal should be allowed to speak at the hearing today based on the, the only ones that spoke in opposition and filed a timely request at both LRD. And they filed appeals for the board of commissioners hearing today. And those individuals are Jim Moon and Hal Wilkins.
They, they should be able to speak, but it is our position, since it was advertised for all, all people who want to participate, that we should allow all, all of them to be able to participate, not just those that objected in a timely manner, as well as for the proponents as well. So.
Mr. Rowling, may I ask you about the record? I have, I want to, how, how do you want me to do the documents?
We can do that at the conclusion of that, that portion, yes.
Okay. We'll do it at the end?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Bill, in clarification, multiple people beyond the two that filed can speak?
That would be my recommendation to the board to allow them to be able to speak.
Is the board amenable to that?
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Jim Moon. I'm one of the, those who's speaking in opposition to this, along with Hal and several of our other neighbors. I have a question. May I ask a question at this point?
No, sir. This is your time for presentation.
Okay. I would like to argue that this is not a business that is needed or desired in our area. Speaking as one who lives in a neighborhood, not just a potential client. There's no need for this. There are already 19 liquor stores within a five-mile radius, just by a simple Google map search. There is a liquor store 1.7 miles from the location in a more densely commercial area south on Ostel Road. The convenience store across the street in Walmart Neighborhood Market already sell beer, wine, and have Sunday sales. The applicant, who is, according to the Secretary of State website, not a Cobb County resident, says this will be a high-end liquor store. This is something that is not needed. Our area is an area of many humble families and residents. According to the Milford Church Osborne Neighborhood Study commissioned or reported to the Cobb County in 2017, there are 13,000 people who live in the area near this store. 75% of those residents make less than $75,000 a year. 27% live below the poverty line, as opposed to, 27% live below the poverty line, as opposed to 12% in Cobb, so that's twice as many. One in four of our neighbors live below the poverty line, as opposed to one in 10 in the rest of Cobb. The median income level for this area is $41,000 and change. The rest of Cobb, $65,000. 86% of the students at nearby Bernie Elementary School are eligible for free or reduced lunch. Our area does not need another liquor store. Our neighborhood does not need another liquor store. We also do not desire another liquor store. According to the same study I just mentioned, the top three weaknesses of our area for attracting more businesses is a proliferation, and I'm quoting, proliferation of uncoordinated strip commercial development uses. There were no land-use, mixed-use designations or nodes along the corridor to concentrate density in, in services. And there was an inundation of certain uses that do not stimulate or attract new businesses. A giant liquor store right across the street from a used furniture store called Steels and Deals at what is supposedly one of the nodes of a neighborhood activity center is not desirable for our neighborhood. It puts an undesirable business at Cobb County identified gateway to our neighborhood, this location, as opposed to what others have said.
That's your three minutes.
Okay.
So, and, and if you don't mind, I, I need to do this for you and the other witnesses as well. Would you raise your right hand? And I'm going to, I'm going to swear you in that you ratified that everything was truthful, okay? Mr. Moon, you swallowed me, you swore that everything you just testified to be the truth and was the truth. So if you.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And if I could do to all those people that are speaking in opposition, if you would please raise your hand. Back here and back. Yes, I'll solemnly swear the testimony that you're going to give before this court will be the truth, will treat that as the truth. So if you got it?
Yes.
Yeah, I need to plug in. You got a wire? You did this before. How do we get information out? So can I project?
I don't have any way for you to connect it, sir.
Don't worry about it. Good afternoon, board. Feels familiar, right? My name's Hal Wilkins. I've, the HOA president of the Glen Meadows subdivision, as forementioned in the prior slide presentation. What I wanted to present to you today, unfortunately, we can't necessarily see, was some things I think that are significant in regards to the applicant's approach, and particularly things that you pointed out, Commissioner Burrell, relative to what happened at the liquor review board and where we got sworn in. One, since it is a pie day, I did a little research on ChatGPT to understand exactly what was going on in our community. Came back and told me the demographics to support what Jim Moon was saying, that it's largely a very mixed neighborhood, mostly African-American, Hispanic, and Latino, some white folks there, too. But what happens is ultimately is the fact that the, the median household is $60,000. So when I did the research and thought about the high-end liquor store that Mr. Bickram was thinking about bringing in, it seemed like it didn't really comport the, the community's economic standings in support. In addition to the number of liquor stores that already exist there, what the ChatGPT did tell me that currently, in the zip code of 30008, there's already six licensed package stores already there. So since we're all, you know, geeking out on today's, I think we need to go back and check and verify if that's accurate or not. What we did also was we went back and we pushed, published an opposition to all of the community members. We got 90 signatures, 89, 90 signatures on, on a Google form I have here of the people within the community that signed this day that they were in opposition. They couldn't be here today. We tried to get them to come in basically to say, be counted and go home, but we had a long-term presentation that took place. But I do have the statistics here on my Google sheet. I can show you exactly who signed, where they came from, and where they live within the community. I even went as far to put myself in Bickram's place. I said, you know, if I'm doing this particular, this particular project, what kind of money do I need in order to do this, right? What kind of payback period am I looking at? And all of the models that I created, I don't necessarily see that payback period coming in time, particularly, I didn't realize he was going to pay $5 million for this particular property. I gave 1.2 on it, because that's kind of really the average cost of that. But the payback periods and the money that to be spent in this area doesn't make sense for him to even see a payback within five years. More importantly, we just had the information of, about the Cobb Innovation Center in our community just being opened in November 2020, right? That school, Osborne, 132 years old, something in that nature, was just upgraded. We've got the Innovation Center. We got kids coming in from your side of the county, our side of the county, coming to be educated. That's not something they need to see, which is not far from where they are. Secondarily, just approved some money from cell tower revenues to help improve our parks over in that area. So Milford Park, a baseball field over there. We hold a lot of Little League championships and playoffs in that area tournaments. They just got money that I think that was approved somewhere in the neighborhood of May 2027, excuse me, 2017 is when that happened, right? So those upgrades and those things happen. But when we were in the meeting with the liquor board, we all got sworn in. And as part of the application process, the applicant.
Mr. Wilkins, sorry, your three minutes are up.
I've got just one more thing to say. Presented 400 documents supporting that they had people from our neighborhood that came through.
Thank you. We need to be mindful of the other speakers, but thank you. Fortunately, yes, you're attending.
Check those 400 if you could.
You got it, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cupid and the Commissioners. My name is Billy Bohannon. My wife, Mignon, and I have lived in the Milford Chase subdivision for thirty years. We are in opposition to the approval request by Brave Spirits LLC, doing businesses, giant wine and spirits. The document handed out identifies reasons for the opposition. I will summarize fifteen sites. There are fifteen alcohol sales sites within two point five road miles and one point seven two airline miles. There are four that are half mile away from the location, one one mile away, five one point five miles away, five two point five miles away. Three of these fifteen sites are liquor sales sites. Eleven seventy-two Milford Church is surrounded by three houses of worship, four public schools, one baseball park, Milford Park. The location is five hundred feet from My Little Angels Daycare and nine hundred feet from Milford Baptist Church. While these are allowable with the Cobb County Code, this is not desirable. This location is a three D, this location is also near three daycares, two churches. Milford Park is an area that has been earmarked as a neighborhood activity center and is not desirable. And there's also a future community, community center that's being located there, an area that is on the upswing and improving with one hundred and thirty-five new condos at Edgemore at Milford. I ask for equal weighting of the legal and moral responsibilities to our neighbors and during his length, at least the least of us in our community. I thank you for your time. Also, in that packet in the bag, documented there, not the aerial shots, but color photos of the fifteen locations. You see how they're crowded? You see the, the area one point seven five, seven five miles? All those are located within fifteen, within that eleven seventy-two Milford Church location.
Thank you.
I have to object, I don't have a copy of whatever she's handing you.
I was told to bring nine. I brought ten.
Okay, let's, um.
We'll provide you with that.
Correct that.
By the way, I didn't get a copy of whatever she's handing out either. Can we get that in turn? I mean, like for like. Otherwise, I think that that's not.
Thank you, sir, we'll address this, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So.
There's, um.
Let's have the other final speaker, and then we'll address it.
There's five minutes left, so whoever's in opposition, I suggest you might want to, if there's more than one, you have two and a half minutes each. Somebody else is raising their hand, so let's, but you can give the full three, and the other person has two.
My name's Kim Phillips. I moved here about two thousand and two, and I live about a half mile from the site that we're talking about. It's also been pointed out that there's a violation of Code six dash ninety-three that was false info was provided about materials. There was, the four hundred people that are for it, most of them are not from this county. And I do have an email that I can forward of about eighty-plus people that are actually from this county that do not want this store. I live in the bluffs at Milford Woods. Two of my main concerns are property value decreases and increases in crime. In the last meeting, John Hopkins study was entered into the record where it shows there's a thirty-seven percent increase of crime in areas where there are liquor stores. And there's a lot of impoverished people in this area, and it's not some of your higher incomes. Most people make under seventy-two. And where I work, we have to consider something called environmental justice, where low-income areas and people that are minorities have to be considered. When you're trying to raise an area up, it's hard to do it when you have a lot of detriments around. And these type of businesses that are adult vices are things that are shown on Realtor.com as things, top ten reasons you don't want to move to a neighborhood. And they tend to draw other adult vices, and the zoning distances that they've got are really inadequate for schools and churches. Most communities are now actually increasing to a thousand feet because of that. The ambiguity, ambiguity in the code is actually something that's supposed to allow the people that are governing to have latitude to make better decisions for the community. And it's kind of unfair also, we received all this information and had to get things together during the holidays. That story did not sit very long. It was like August, and then they snapped it right up, and then we got all the public meeting stuff. We had to get things entered before Thanksgiving, and now we've gone all the way up to now pie day. So it's just really, you know, hard for people that, you know, work to make these meetings and to actually get their points across and to do research on this. There's research all over the place about forty percent of crimes are alcohol-related according to National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And to invite something like this into our area, just, it can't help. And it tends to attract other type of businesses that are adult vice businesses. And if we do something like that, then, you know, how can you deny those type businesses? And that certainly is not gonna be.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
It said two minutes, so I was.
Yeah, that's, your three minutes are up, so there's two minutes left.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Bill de Barleben, and I don't have a lot of statistics like the others have, but I will tell you, Chairman, I've reached that eighty-year mark myself, just a couple of weeks ago, so, but I'm not a woman. What I'd like to, the point I'd like to make is, I'm with Milford Church, Milford Baptist Church. We have a passion about serving the community. We have an active food service that we give out around three hundred boxes, banana boxes full of food that's got about thirty-five pounds. So if you figure that out, we give out about ten thousand pounds of food every Thursday. And I'm working there ten hours a day every Thursday. And I just cannot see where, when I give directions to somebody to come by and get food, I just can't stomach the idea of saying, turn by the liquor store. But I, I just cannot, I hope that, I hope that stirs your emotions against it, because I don't know what the legal standards are, but it does not, it's not the right thing to do to have to tell somebody, come by the liquor store to get your food, you know? Because that's what they would have to do, is turn off Ostel Road by a liquor store. And that's really all I had to say. Y'all think about that when you're voting to approve it or not. Oh, one other, one other thing I'll say is, I think when you're counting votes for it, counting votes against it, all of those votes should be Cobb County residents. And I hope y'all are doing something to make sure that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's only one second left for opponents.
We'll dispose of that second.
Yeah. So now those people that, proponents of the application, again, you have three minutes each, total of thirteen minutes. And you come to the podium, there's a timer on the podium, so.
Bill, do they have to be sworn in as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, we didn't ask, we didn't ask this for opposition, but in light of that remark, it was asked if we can ask for name and also address. We just didn't do it for the opponents of it. I know some of them did state where they live, but my concern is, we didn't have balance.
That'd be fine. So all ears, to the testimony, please raise your right hand. Salute for the testimony that you give before this board will be the truth, all truth, that's the truth regarding this matter. Three minutes each.
So Bill, name and.
Name and address. Name and address, just a moment.
Name and location, you don't have to give the street address, just, yeah, just location, you know? We're not gonna follow you home and figure out.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lynette Summers. I've been a resident of Cobb County since nineteen eighty, and I live in the Villas at the corner of Callaway and, where do I live? Oh, Powder Springs, Powder Springs, I've only been there six months. And I live about, oh, probably a mile and a half maybe from this proposed liquor store. And I'm formerly off of Westchester Circle, near Kerpatic and Whitlock. And there's a liquor store between the Marietta High School and where I live. And I have never seen any kind of crime. I've felt completely safe. And actually, it was an improvement. It used to be a restaurant there, and it was vacant for quite some time. And we were really all very happy that it went in there. And this is a very high-class liquor store. And I don't see any problem with, anyhow, I'm in support of it. Yay, tequila, okay.
That's on the record.
Hi, my name is Jane Hunt, and I live in one of the subdivisions that one of the people appealing this. So when they say, we don't want it, I don't know who they're talking about, because we want it. And there's been a lot of social media about this topic, and as you can imagine, heated both sides. And there were many people in our subdivision that were for it, along with us, my husband and myself, and they just could not be here, because, you know, we're retired, but they work. And one of the things that keeps getting brought up is, you know, it's near children or a school, but even though they meet all the legal requirements, and what I don't understand is, if I go there, and another comment was made, it's gonna attract a certain element. Well, I guess I'm the element, a sixty-nine-year-old grandmother. If I go there, purchase an adult beverage, go back to my home and partake of that beverage in the privacy of my home, I don't know how I'm hurting anybody, including, you know, children at a, at a school that's more than the distance that needs to be. And the other thing that keeps getting brought up is like, as if we're in a poverty area. And the neighborhood that we're in, our homes are going for the mid-three hundreds, the house next door to us just sold for three ninety-nine. So I think somebody can afford to patronize that store. And talking about, you know, where there's alcohol, there's crime, there's already beer and wine at the Walmart, and there's not been any kind of issues in that area at all. And this is just adding distilled spirits to it that people, you know, want to purchase. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next speaker.
Hello. Thanks for being here.
Please give your name.
When this business.
Please give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Helen Gilbert.
And general vicinity of where you.
Yes.
Do you live in the general vicinity?
Creekview.
Okay, thank you.
Off of Creekview Drive.
Thank you.
Which is real near, almost within walking distance.
Okay.
But when this business was proposed, I got out to thinking, what are the pluses and what are the minuses? And do you know, I did not see any minuses, all pluses. I want Cobb County to have the revenue, rather than some other Sandy Springs or, and my son and I own the business across the street, Steels and Deals. I don't know whether that statement made by another person was putting it down or building it up, but we've been there almost twenty years. And I think we serve a purpose for the community by selling good used furniture that they can afford. And I think this store is going to increase property values, I really do. I mean, I wasn't born yesterday, and I know it will increase property values. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jan Plyler, and I live in Magnolia Lane, which is approximately one mile from this store. I've been excited about it, you know? I, I want to see it open. It is a very, it will be a very upscale business, and I think our area needs it. Now, you might say there are seventeen liquor stores in a five-mile radius, so if an upscale restaurant wanted to move into that Ostel area, what are we gonna say? Oh, we've already got sixty restaurants, you know? We don't need you. And this is kind of what's been said today. I'm for it. I think it would help the neighborhood, just by its upscale presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sharon Cantrell. I'm a resident of Cobb County. I've lived in the area over sixty years since I first married. I think it would be an asset to have this business, because I've noticed trash and litter all behind the CVS since it's closed, and I think it would be an asset to put a business in there that can give us good revenue and help on maybe even lower our taxes. I would prefer going into a business like this that is upscale, rather than some of the smaller liquor stores that are under standard. This one would be an asset to our community. Thank you.
Excuse me, before you speak, sir, is there anybody else speaking as a proponent? Okay, all right.
Hello, my name is Robert Moyer. I am a Cobb County resident. I am also for the liquor store opening. I did not know how beautiful it was going to be. It is quite magnificent. One thing that maybe a lot of you don't know is when a large liquor store opens, they usually purchase in bulk, meaning cheaper prices for your distilled spirits, wine, beer. So that does oppose to kind of the other questions earlier about the low incomes, like the booze is cheaper, it's a little bit more affordable, because you're, once again, buying in bulk. As far as some of the other statements that were made about schools and children, well, you can't be under twenty-one to shop in the store anyway. So those people won't even be really allowed to shop in the store already. The law and moral are two completely different things. If due process is being made, there shouldn't be really opposition for it not opening. That's all I have.
Yes. He said Cobb County, he didn't say specifically Bill.
Sir, I'm sorry, there's a question about where was you lived, what areas?
I live in Sunland County.
No, no, the person just spoke.
I live in Sunland.
And sir, did you stand for the sworn in?
I did not.
Okay. Sir, did you stand? Okay, please, both raise your right hand.
Sure.
Salute for the testimony you got before to be the truth, all truth, that's the truth, so if you got it.
I did.
Yeah, my name is Lee Hunt. I live in the Milford Chase subdivision. I'm about a mile from the proposed location of the liquor store. And I'm really not here to support it just because it's a liquor store. I'm here to support the right of this man to open up a retail business that's in full compliance with all the regulations of Cobb County. I support the free market system. I support that he has the right to make an investment, and that he doesn't have the right, that people don't have the right to just stop him just because they have an opinion about it. I wish him well in his business endeavor, and I hope you can approve this business license for him. One of the things that has been brought up is the fear, excuse me, the fear that it might hurt property values, but there's no indication of that. I've done some research on the internet. I've done some research on the Internet, and most of them basically state there's no indication that a liquor store would drive down the value of the properties in the area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name is Jacob Junka. I'm a former resident of Cobb County at the Barrett-Walk Apartments, which is actually how I met Bikram. And I wanted to speak to him more so as a person. He's someone that I've noticed and seen multiple times, shows respect to people when respect isn't due. He's a good man. And, you know, at the end of the day, in a country where we have seen the biggest jump in wealth from the rich to the poor, I feel like not allowing a man who is following the American dream to open up a liquor store, create business, revenue, and jobs for this county, is just unfair, especially when it does not go against any of the code mentioned before. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. There's still a balance of time.
There's about four minutes left. Is anybody else? Before it comes back over to the board, can I just meet with the attorneys just regarding a record issue to make sure that we get that clarified?
Sure. Let's take a brief recess then for... Do you need to do, take a recess to do it? Or are you okay doing it?
I think we can just do it on the sidebar.
Okay, go ahead.
Chairwoman and Board, if we, just for the clarification of the record, Ms. Morschauer is going to make sure those exhibits that have been agreed to by counsel are all part of the record, which is part of a de novo review and then be provided to the clerk as a result of that. So she's just going to go through that list on what those items are.
Was that in her presentation, her slides?
Correct. But she's just going to present what those... You're going to go through that list? Yes, if you would, just say those items you just spoke about.
When you say de novo review, they're reviewing this hearing as if it's the first time the evidence has been...
The board is reviewing this hearing. It's a de novo review, correct.
Just briefly, everything that was in my slideshow, so I think there were 36 items. And then I want to make sure that I have objections for the record, and I want to put in the certified copy of the...
You don't have to rush.
Okay. Now I'm on a roll to rush.
Yeah, you're okay.
Certified copy of the Alcohol Code as of January 4th, which was the day before the License Review Board hearing, which I don't think... I think it's the same code as it was that day. And then I asked that the agenda items, whatever's in your agenda packet for the case be included. And then we had delivered to y'all, and I think this is actually in my slide presentation, but I just want to be sure it gets in. This is the stack of supporters. And there's 760. So I just want to be sure that that goes into.
And I think that was actually delivered to the clerk's office yesterday as well that she's received.
Yeah, so I'm going to put that. Okay, so I have all that. And I think that's everything.
All right. And then in addition, Madam Clerk, those items that were provided by the speakers, that were provided to you, that was also shared with the board, we also include that as part of the record as well. Okay.
And Bill, just so you know that we did get a copy on a flash drive of everything that she presented. Brad was able to submit that to us. So we do have her whole slideshow presentation.
With that, the issue's back before the board.
Okay. And no closing needs to be provided?
If the board wants to allow additional time for closing, you allow...
I just thought that was part of the process. If it's not desired, are you desiring closing?
I would love to.
Okay.
I'll say it quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
How much time?
How much time?
You tell me, Bill. And also, I know I see a hand in the audience. Typically, our closing is just reserved for the county and the applicant.
Correct. I suggest three minutes, no more than three minutes.
In closing, I'd like to say that there were 760 supporters. And a majority of those people do live in this neighborhood. And if you check the addresses, you'll see that they are near the store, within a five-mile radius of the store, or even less, two-mile radius. And the community opposition is an interesting premise because you want to have harmony in the neighborhood. And I think my client wants to show that he's a good neighbor. He tried to meet with them to explain what he was going to do. He's bringing in a beautiful store. This is not going to be a shabby store by any stretch of the imagination. And his price points will be, there'll be lesser-priced points of alcohol, but you can also get higher-end purchases that you can't find in other places around. I know my husband likes to drink a really good bourbon, and it's hard to find. But I think that if you want something like that, you'd be able to get that in this store. And it's also, it'll be a safe store for all the women who just showed up to support it. Those ladies are going to feel very safe walking into this store, where they may not feel safe going into some of the other stores that are near their homes. So in regard to what the community has to show under Section 6-106, there's certain evidence that they have, that the community, if it's opposing an application, has to submit. And we submit that they did not meet any of the requirements in Section 6-106. There's nothing that was presented that shows there's going to be detrimental property decreases to their home property. There is nothing showing that there's going to be an increase in traffic. The parking situation is extremely sufficient. There's more than enough parking. That corner has a lot of traffic already, and that's not going to be impacted. And there was no evidence presented today that there are going to be any children loitering or any criminal activity taking place at this location. That was all speculation, but it is unfounded. That is not the case. I have stores, I can walk to Jackie's Fine Wines, which is half a mile from my house, and I never see children congregating at Jackie's Fine Wines. And I like to go there, and they're not my client. And I like to go there and buy alcohol. I have a Publix and a Kroger and a BP within, within less than half a mile of my house. I'm in East Cobb. And I never see anybody congregating at any of those places. And then if you go further into, down Johnson Ferry Road, there are other stores at intersections with package stores, and no issues are ever, I never see issues at those stores. So we would request that you review all the evidence that we've presented, consider that the app, the appellant's, we objected, we really object to the people who spoke that did not file appeals, but that's in my constitutional objections. And look at the fact that there's not going to be an increase in traffic. There's not going to be a congregation of underage people. There's not going to be...
Ms. Morschauer, I'm sorry your time's up.
...activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, since there is no additional closing by the county, I'm going to turn things over to you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Bill, I can ask questions at this time? Are we allowed to ask questions or follow up or just kind of dive right in to the applicant? It was just a few questions. And usually, we'll have the application, and if not, that's fine. But usually, we'll have the application with the hours of operation, et cetera. But that wasn't included. And I understand that it was not because it was any distance violation. So I'm not sure what the policy is as it relates to asking those type of questions.
The record's closed at this point.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, this has been an application that's come to my attention since August, or maybe September of last year. And I just want to thank everyone who testified today for the residents and your engagement in the process, whether you're in opposition or in support. I appreciate your concern, and you're a passionate appeal for our beloved community. As I mentioned, this came to my attention last year. And when the residents found out that the CVS was closing its door, I received an overwhelming number of emails and meeting requests from community leaders, clergy, and residents who expressed disappointment and concern, as we heard here today, about the proposed business moving the community in the wrong direction. The once-neighborhood pharmacy promoted health, access to prescriptions, over-the-counter medication, and an assortment of general merchandise, all of which service the broader community. The proposed establishment would service a smaller segment of the neighborhood residents, and based on the feedback of those in opposition would not promote a healthy community. However, I've also received emails in support of the establishment and signed petitions from the applicant's representatives. I will add a footnote that while there are 700 signatures, I believe, that were submitted, there were several in support that live outside of the immediate area, living as far as East Cobb and Beaufort, Georgia, which I find a bit baffling. And I'm not sure of that 700 signatures, how many actually are outside of the immediate area. So on the one hand, you can't reject the community's objection to a daycare that's 690 feet away from the establishment, but you submit signatures in support of someone that lives 43 miles away from the location. I'm not sure why those individuals would be asked to sign a petition for establishment in an area that they have likely never visited. But whatever the reason, whatever the reason, I will say that this is just not a good way to start off the trust within the community. We are brought here today in accordance with Section 6-965(c) of the Cobb County Code that requires, among other things, that a hearing is scheduled in the event of opposition to the alcohol license application. As you heard here today, applications are typically denied if distance requirements are not met. And it's at the discretion of the License Review Board or the Board of Commissioners to grant a waiver in those instances. However, there aren't any distance requirements violations for this application. I'd also like to add that there was a comment made that there is a $5 million investment in the community with this location. But I want to communicate to the applicant that the $5 million investment, it is indeed an investment to your business, not necessarily the community. While there may be employment opportunities available, when I hear that a business is investing in a community, as was mentioned today, I anticipate hearing of an establishment that would meet a need or bridge the gap of the community, such as an after-school tutoring center or a health professional training center. That's, when I hear you're investing in the community, those are the things that I'm hearing. Or those are the things that I listen for. However, the Board of Commissioners, we serve as a quasi-judicial board to hear and consider testimony from the applicant, those that are in opposition and in support. We are restrained in this position as arbiters when an applicant meets county standards. And before I render a decision, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues if you have any comments or anything you'd like to share at this time. No? Okay.
I just have one question. I know there was mention of, and this may be for Alicia. I know there was mention of other businesses in that shopping center or close proximity with, to this, that also sold beer and wine. Were they a distance factor, a waiver?
I believe the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which sits behind this tenant space, had to get a distance waiver, I guess. And there's a Walmart marketplace there. There's a convenience store across the street with beer and wine. Those are the two closest.
Okay. So, and they were granted a license with a distance? They didn't meet the distance requirement initially?
I'm pretty certain about the Walmart. The convenience store, I'm not 100% sure of. But yes, they would have had to have been granted a distance waiver if there were, in fact, the distance issues.
Okay.
But as a follow-up question, if you can just clarify if that's beer and wine sales and not distilled spirits?
Correct. The convenience store has beer and wine only as well as the Walmart.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Alicia. With that, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to uphold the recommendation of the License Review Board's decision to grant Giant Wine and Spirits Liquor, Beer, Wine, and Sunday Sales Package License.
Is there any discussion?
I'm going to share my concern. Even, I appreciate the presentations on both sides of the matter and agree with the applicant about a number of the observations that she's made with respect to how there has not been some evidence provided to qualify opposition, looking particularly at 6-106, except for 6-1063. And I think that's the argument that's being made here today. I do believe that the application has met all of the distance requirements. And so I certainly don't think that that's a factor that can be considered. However, what you can consider is whether or not there are no licenses granted in an area or that the proposed area already is adequately supplied with such licenses. And I think that's an argument that has been made and qualified through evidence provided by opposition. Particularly if you look at this packet provided by the third speaker in opposition, where they listed 15 establishments with approximate distance. The consideration of Clause 6-106(3) doesn't state that you need to narrow the consideration within the distance requirements. And in this, he provides a number of establishments, 15 of locations varying from point, excuse me, .2 miles to, well, he listed the Walmart Neighborhood Market of a location that sells alcohol all the way to 2.5 miles out with his east-west package. And that's specific evidence that shows the number that are proximate to the location. And that's specific evidence that shows the number that are proximate to the location. There's also commentary, and even though I don't have documented substantiation, there is concern, excuse me, that was shared, an argument, I believe regarding the location of a liquor store to, or concern about the location of a liquor store to the values of property nearby. The person who spoke, I believe the fourth speaker, I didn't get a resource provided from that, but that's a concern shared that she stated that she did observe in her research. I know we've had a lot of difficulty here on our board with assessing what number determines too much of something, because we do want to support a free-market system, and we want to support the economic development of our county. But I think there's a reason why liquor is regulated, unlike other uses. You know, there was an analogy made to restaurants and, you know, proliferation of restaurants in an area. Unlike food in itself, you know, food isn't regulated as an intoxicating substance like alcohol is, and I think there's a reason why there's a different set of policies pertaining to alcohol, which differentiates looking at the number of other uses compared to this use. There's also substantive body of research that shows when you do introduce alcohol in areas of lower income, that there can be overrepresented negative impact to those communities, whether it be in health or crime, and not saying that that specifically is going to happen here, and it's not necessarily causation, but just correlation of those communities to having alcohol around it does make them more vulnerable than other areas. There's data provided with respect to the income levels of those that live here to show that they could be potentially more vulnerable than other areas of our county should this be introduced here. I've been here, and I've been a commissioner of this area, and I've been, this has been a very difficult matter to address because, you know, there's Cobb, there's Cobb County as a whole, and then there's unique areas of Cobb that just seem to have issues exacerbated more than others, where the introduction of walking, perhaps where the applicant said she, or the attorney said she lives close and within walking distance, you can look at what else is in that area to see what may contribute to a different experience in one community versus another. And there are lots of factors to consider, just then being in walking distance and that approximate access. And, you know, I know, I know where you're going. I know there's not a lot of evidence to, to overrule this application by way of meeting all of the criteria listed in 6-106, but we don't necessarily need to qualify opposition based on meeting all of those factors. You need one factor to state that this is a concern, and I believe that the residents are here today because of their concern with respect to the adverse impact, and I believe that adverse impact could be due to the number of locations that are already of similar use within proximity of this area. I can't support this application. Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I guess our code and our laws are set so that we all know the boundaries to which we can operate and function. It is clear that this application meets the requirements of our code, he's locating where he should, and he also meets the codes to obtain a liquor license. In the information that was provided in this packet of the 15 existing alcohol sales in the area, nine of those are gas stations. Three of them are grocery stores, which means in the 2.5-mile radius that this, or I'm not sure if it's a radius, but the 2.5-mile area that these were done for, essentially that leaves us three stores that are potentially going to be competing for this business. However, just from reading these names of the stores, they do not sound like they are the same type of business as this applicant is going to be offering. While I understand, you know, the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the area is of a concern, a CVS does meet that, but it was not supported and had to leave. So, again, we have to trust that the applicant has done his due diligence to determine that this is a location that he can be successful and fit a need of the community, even though if it might not be what we think should be the need of the community. Obviously, there is a need that he has seen, and therefore I support this based on the fact our codes and our laws he is following and therefore should be granted.
Thank you. Bill, if you can just provide a little clarification for me with Section 6-106, Number 3, that reads that evidence that there are no licenses granted in the area or that the proposed area already is adequately supplied. And I know that that issue came up last month, I think it was, when we had a alcohol hearing. And where I get stuck, because you and I had discussions, a lot of discussions regarding this, but where I got stuck is the adequately. So with, with the locations that were submitted on this map, the, the majority of their alcohol sales are beer and wine. So I don't know if with this applicant, since the distilled spirits or the liquor is being sold there, would that remove the adequate piece of this? I just need help with that.
Right. And Gamble points out that, that of the 13, I think, 15, that nine of them did not include that. And so, and quite frankly, that is the applicant's objection to this particular code section. As I understand, her objection to it is not sufficiently defined, and it leaves too much discretion within the board to be able to make that, to make that decision, and it subjects the board to, to an appeal related to that. And so, but to the extent that the board is able to actually receive evidence, which is required pursuant to 6-106, you have to make sure that the evidence you've received actually is able to sufficiently define that term as adequately or not. As Commissioner Gamble has pointed out, there's other issues that point against that, and it is your motion, it seems like your motion is in that direction as well, but it's a board decision that is being challenged, is being too vague.
Thank you.
Bill, I would just add to that, the term adequate is not qualified in our code by definition, and it does provide us discretion. It's discretion that we have when we consider any term provided within our code unless that code is specifically called out in definition. And so I think that provides us to be able to weigh our concerns towards adequacy. And I believe that until we come up with a policy that determines what adequate is, that we are not in violation of looking at what's before us and making that determination. As you provided, we need evidence that shows it's adequate. I don't see anything that would diminish our ability to take into consideration the document provided to look at 15 establishments, and if they're selling alcohol, whether it's in one form or the other, it's likely that they've had to get an application, an application or a license to be able to sell that alcohol. So you're dealing with an area that has had multiple licenses for sale, and it gets back to the prior question that Commissioner Sheffield has, what's that tipping point? All right? And, you know, based on time, I'm sure a lot of these applications may have already been received and considered prior to our board being here, but I think each board should have the ability to weigh when that tipping point is reached, and I perceive, and again, we have the discretion to do so with that term, and I've never heard that each term within our code that, that we have to, we have to define that solely based on the evidence. I think, I think our code gives us that discretion until it's called out for us.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask Alicia a question at this point?
She's already been asked a question afterwards, so to be consistent.
Okay. Can you share with us the code for distance requirements from one liquor store or package store to a next or an establishment that sells liquor?
It's, the requirement, 1,500 feet, is regulated by state law.
Okay. I thought it was, I wasn't sure. That's all I had, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner. Alicia, do we know how far, if I recall correctly, this establishment is to the next closest one? Was it like 6,500 feet? If I remember correctly?
Let me grab this survey, but I think you're correct.
It's 6,500.
Yeah, 6,500.
Thank you.
And I understand, you know, also the comments about trusting an applicant and their due diligence. If that were the case, we would never have any zoning license come before us or anyone when they have a viable application. There's a reason why certain matters come before the board for us to consider it, and I recognize the fact that any applicant has the ability to want to, you know, provide a business and an enterprise or a development in our county and get a financial return. But I also believe there's a reason why there are processes by which those things are weighed by the board, and it's not just given by right, even though I think a great place to start from isn't trusting, you know, that somebody who wants to do business here in Cobb wants to do right by Cobb. And we also want our businesses to do right by us, but we also want to do right by those that live here and entrust us to be mindful of their health, safety, and welfare as well.
I just want to be clear, but we can't necessarily consider the economic viability of the institution, correct?
No, I mean, there's nothing in the code that would, that would push toward that. That's the decision of the applicant, whether they'd be able to be viable or not, so.
Right, only its impact to the community. Right, thank you.
I think there is, there's a motion in a second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Chairwoman Cupid in opposition. This concludes our hearing. Thank you.
Chairwoman, can I just check with Alicia on the, on the second hearing? I think.
You're playing the street, wouldn't go for a lot, chicken.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't even see the time. Oh, my Lord, I'm supposed to have another meeting at 1:00 today.
You had a meeting at 1:00?
Yes.
Chairwoman, I think we can, before we can. No, we just need to make, we need to, no, they're not here.
Oh, okay.
So we just need to clean that up. Ms. Moore, if you can please, we continue with our hearing. It should just take one moment. Ms. Webb, were you able to contact the applicant in El Barco?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Shh, please, please, if you would, please. Shh. Were you able to contact the applicant?
My staff was able to contact the applicant, and she states that she didn't get the letter to appear here today.
And, but it was posted outside the property, is that correct?
Posted at the location, yes, sir.
Okay, but the opposition did not appear as well?
They're not here either.
Your recommendation, the board has maybe continued over the April hearing?
That would be my recommendation.
Commissioner Sheffield, we need to vote on that by the Commissioner? Bill?
Yes. It's April.
I think it's April the 11th.
April 11th.
Okay, let me just get the name of the company. Do I just need to note, Bill, the agenda item number or the name of the applicant?
Yeah, agenda item number 40. El, El Barco, I mean, business El Barco.
All right. I make a motion to continue Agenda Item Number 40 to the, let me look at the date, sorry.
April 11th.
To the Board of Commissioners' April 11th meeting.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.